Cost, capital cost of those systems to the point where I wouldn't feel comfortable without us vetting that and coming to terms with that. I would not be submitting a document with those kinds of numbers in it to the state before we're satisfied with it. So, we're holding that up. That's the main thing, I guess. There were a number of other questions that I had to address. You know, this is a unique community. It's a resort community. The sewage flows are extremely variable over the season without the infiltration from the lake. And I just want to make sure that we're going forward with the right numbers. And so, we're going to ask them to explain all that on December 4th. That's right. Yeah. Okay. That's what I had.
I'd just like to make a comment, and I'm not stroking him. Please, let me make sure I...
Don't do you stroking me.
You understand that. We are fortunate to have this man in this seat at this time with his experience as with the stuff we're dealing with. As an insurance guy, there's not much I can do and come up with, but his background is engineering extensively in that field. And I don't think there's anybody sitting at this table that would say anything other than we are fortunate that we've got him sitting here as with all this we've got going on, without question.
Yes.
We keep him well.
Thanks for saying that. Yeah. Well, I can do that on my back. You can think while you're...
He's been flat his back for 10 days, so we're glad he's up and moving again.
Shannon, I didn't, I don't note on here, but you and I had discussed about the possibility of, at least saying a few words about our other major infrastructure project, the commissioner's consent. I'd like to go ahead and give a brief report about the dam and what's going on. We are proceeding on the engineering work relating to the dam renovation. We're into our second contract per se with, now with Schnabel Engineering. Schnabel is, we approved a couple of meetings ago, a rather significant piece of work that they're involved in, we call it Task Order One. There are actually, I think, seven or eight discrete subtasks within that, various components of work that, much of which the state is requiring, the state dam safety office is requiring that we do before finalizing our plan to go forward with renovations. So, in addition to the work that Dr. Marx had done and in the recommendations that he had made based on his investigations, the state asked us to take a step backwards, do some additional investigations and studies, and take another look at those recommendations before we commit to doing them and spending millions of dollars to do them. So, Schnabel, I would just say, in my opinion, has been doing outstanding work for the town. I think every day I see what they're doing. It makes me feel better and better about selecting them as their engineers. And, you know, I say that without hesitation. I think they're doing very high-quality work. Those of you that might be around the dam or can see the dam from where you live along the lake are going to notice some activity out there today, even in the rain. They are conducting an underwater examination or survey of the wet face, the front face of the dam. And so, they've got a, I understand, I saw it yesterday, a pretty elaborate dive boat, pontoon down there. They've got deep diving equipment. They're going down and videotaping what the divers see, you know, so they have a permanent record of that. It'd be extremely valuable, I think, since it hasn't been done going forward, so we know exactly what the front face of that dam looks like underwater. And so, that work should be done. I think this week, it's about a week-long worth of work, they've completed a complete and detailed survey of the dam. And when they say survey, it isn't just a bunch of guys out there with a transit and a level or something. They used some fairly sophisticated equipment to digitize the geometry of the dam. They use LiDAR equipment, and they've used drones, and, you know, so they've used some fairly sophisticated technology in order to create, in a sense, a three-dimensional geogram, geological model of it. And they're going to use that when they do their structural finite analysis of it. And so, that's about 20% I think into the finite analysis. That's the major piece of work. And we expect all this to be done by December. Well, the finite analysis work may go off into January, but all the field work will be done by the end of this month. So, that's, I think, the status of all...
Well, we'd be able to view that video at some point in time?
I think so. Yeah, I would be surprised if they couldn't just send us a digitized file. I'll ask for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. In fact, I'm going to go down there tomorrow. They've got a trailer, and I think you can actually watch them in real time if any of us are interested, see what they see down there. I'd be interested to see them.
I saw them working out there today. I'm afraid they might get wet in the rain, but then I thought, wait a minute. That's a big deal, right?
I'd probably like to add, Mr. Mayor, that based on the initial engineering assessment of the dam and then the follow-up letter from the state, the state was asking for technical data. It didn't appear necessarily in the original engineering report. And based on what Schnabel is doing for us and based on some of their preliminary, very preliminary assessments and findings, I personally feel much better about our dam than I did initially. And I think that will play out. And so, we're looking forward to pulling together some information and releasing that regarding the status of the dam here fairly soon.
And so, the commissioners and the public know, we're also trying to move ahead as best we can on financing of this project, knowing, you know, ultimately that this is going to require some long-term debt financing to pay for whatever renovations we have. There'll be a significant, no matter what they find, there'll be significant renovation costs. And so, we're talking with the USDA, looks like the best source of long-term debt financing for that. And they have two programs that they're trying to get us into. One is for the rural electrification program typically for small hydroelectric plants like ours, who would typically fund something like that. Ours is a little bit unique in its history in that it's, it may not, it doesn't power the town. We sell the power to Duke. And so, there may be a little bit of an issue as to the use of power versus actually providing rural power to a community, which I think is what the purpose of that program was. If there isn't funding available under that program for us, then the other program is the municipal facilities program, I think it is. And there should be funds, and it's likely we'll need to go to Washington to get them. But there's another source of funds there. So, we really can't do much until we know what we have to do and how much that's going to cost. But in the meantime, at least we can identify where the source of funds are, and that's kind of what we're doing.
Sam, did we leave anything out?
Okay. All right. Is that it, Shannon? On your...
I think so, unless council has questions about any of the items we have.
Well, I have a question about one that's not on the list, but it's on your report in here. And that's on the restroom renovation. According to your report, there's waiting to bid. The timeline that was approved by council some time back was that the bids were supposed to have been, the new RFP was, should have gone out in August, opening bid September 31st, October 9th, council meeting, and you announced. So, apparently, we're not at that point. And I imagine all the storms and you going into the position in June like you did, and there's a lot of turmoil, a lot of things going on. And that's okay, but the timeline also included starting construction December 1 to be finished by April 1st. So, I'm wondering how, where we are in regards to meeting the April 1 target date for project completion, even though we've had the delays, are we in track to do that?
Well, as I reported before, we're holding that project back until we complete the plans for the commercial center, so we can bid these at the same time. What we found is that if we can use two projects to incent perhaps the same commercial contractor to bid, we may find that we have additional bids. Last time, when we bid this document, we had one commercial bidder. It came in $100,000 over what we estimated. And so, we clearly understood that that single approach is not going to work, at least it wasn't working then. So, we thought after the Equestrian Center finished with their international event, we finished with the plans for the commercial center, then we would bid those at the same time. So, we're just now wrapping up plans for the commercial center.
Do we have a target on when the bid or the RFP is going to go out for both of these projects?
Well, I think this timeline is not so bad, the one that you have there.
The April 1 completion?
The whole goal is to get these things done before we start back into tourist season of next year. That's the bottom line.
Okay. Well, since the other timeline was unanimously approved by council and was never changed, do we need to approve a new timeline?
I would say, I'd say you may, but not this evening because we don't have that new timeline ready.
Okay.
Do you think we will in December? Have a bid day, a target bid date?
Yes, I think we can have a new timeline in December.
Let's try to have that happen.
Then, yeah, I'd like to see that next month then, to approve that. So, we can do that, that timeline. Because this was a previously approved council timeline. So, all right.
Okay, we can do that.
That's all I had on that. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, let's move ahead into item five, which are the council liaison reports and comments. Bobby, you want to go first?
Yeah, I can go first since the mayor did a good job on the flow pressure system update and discussion, giving all those facts. You did a great job on it. The other thing that the utility board met and had a presentation by Josh Adman, President of Preferred Sources, what they're looking for there in the utilities boards reviewing are the pumping system themselves. So, they're bringing in their own pump sources and controls and doing a presentation on what their pumps can do and how far they can pump the waste and kind of being the specs. And what these contractors are wanting is be the one who's going to be specified to supply every pump throughout this entire project of redoing the waste bar system. So, this was a second presentation done. There'll be one more presentation for a third one. Then, the utility board will review that and probably make a recommendation to the council within a short time after the third presentation. So, they're working hard on that. We've got a good group on that board that's going through all this engineering. And of course, them, like the rest of us, we're looking to see why the costs have gone up so drastically over the first initial cost. So, there's some questions to be answered, and that's why our utility board and the mayor's doing a good job with and our staff. We appreciate that. And as I understand, we've got another meeting this Friday, the utility board. So, they're hard at it. That's all I've got.
John, any questions for Commissioner Cameron about his report? Okay. If there's none, Commissioner Kilby?
I will go through lake operations. Dean's already spoken to the dredging and got everything up to speed, and everybody informed on that. We had lengthy discussion of that at the LEB meeting, Lake Advisory Board meeting, a week ago yesterday. And we talked about lake cleanup. Just really, nothing specific, but a lot of what Dean's working on. We're trying to get education out for no-wake zones and the importance of that to people, people that don't normally or not around the lake, and so they'll know what a no-wake zone is. So, when, if they violate no-wake policies, it's a safety issue. Dean's got some things that we're going to require be placed on every stand-up paddleboard, kayak, everything non-motorized, so they know what they can do and can't do. So, he's working hard on that. So, that will be, that will be a good thing. So, as far as lake advisory, I think that pretty much covers that. On ABC, we did get our, I went through the annual report last month, and we meet again next week for ABC. So, we do have a new bookkeeper that has been hired for, we had some issues, and we have a new bookkeeper there that's doing that. And we're working toward, we've had some change of personnel, working towards some full-time employees and things of that nature. So, a lot of focus there, too.
Good. Thank you. Questions?
Yes, on the lake advisory board, Dean, I know our dredging, originally, we were setting aside our $400,000. Originally, we're going to set $100,000 a year for coves and different projects like that. Of course, with the storms that's come up now, New Examples, Firefly Cove, we actually have dirt out of the ground now in the lake. And I'm getting questions as far as what's the town's approach today? Are you still setting aside $100,000 a year to do cove work, or is the full amount? I know this year, the full amount's already dedicated to the river.
Are we going to cover that later under the dredging policy item?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, can we, I think it's all, just listening to your questions, every one of them, I think, is in that policy.
Okay, because I read the policy, and that's, it doesn't clearly state what they're going to do for the project. It says they're going to discuss it and look at it, but it doesn't have a...
And the policy probably needs, what we get, probably needs to be amended to address your points.
We did have a presentation at LEB from a person from the Firefly Cove. They had drawings and calculations and all those things. So, that was, that was a part of that discussion as well.
Well, we'll go back to that.
I know if we haven't heard from them, we will hear from Romley Bald about their area as well. So, we better be prepared to have a policy that we treat everyone...
That's what it was. I felt the policy wasn't there to let them in.
Yeah. Okay. We'll definitely cover that. John, you?
Yeah. Zoning and planning board met on October 16th. There was continued discussion about the lighting standards with the PowerPoint presentation by Brad Burton on light pollution. It was noted that Ingalls has downlighting already in the parking lot, but most of the light pollution we see coming from there is from the gas tanks. And where the gas tank canopies are, they don't have the shields, and it'd get a lot of glare from there that's really not necessary. So, it could be easily corrected with the shields or using lights similar to the ones that are used at Lake Lorlanding. Recommendation from staff was that the current commercial and hillside regulations specific to new construction and dark sky requirements are adequate, and that they really didn't recommend any changes there. Duke Energy will upgrade their streetlights, the lights that they're responsible for around the town, if the town requires that. So, they're not going to do it without it being a town requirement, but that's something that we need to probably start looking at, and they'll be looking at that further zoning and planning.
One question I had for you there is that the ones they're doing now don't have shields on them. They've already started replacing Duke for Duke Energy, and I would like to see something in there that all their fixtures must have shields, because the example is you drive down Boys Camp Road in the morning, there's a floodlight there that just blinds you totally coming out.
Yes.
So, I'd like to see in their work there, if they would, that they require, any downlighting they provide must have shields.
Then, what we need to do is get an ordinance put together for the next meeting, so that we can get on, you know, get ahead of it.
Right. Because it's just, they're already replacing the old mercury vapor fixtures, and you see these, and they are just glaring all directions. If they just put a simple shield on there, that light would go down. But if you ever want to see one that glares at you, just go past that church, turn around and come back this way, and before dusk in the morning, it's just blinding.
Brad, do you need anything else from us to put, you can put that together with just...
Very clear direction.
Okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. There's been a move towards shielding, shielded or downlighting that greatly reduces glare and enhances the dark sky. That's kind of a trend throughout the industry, I guess. Shielding's not prohibitively expensive. It only requires shielding and usually does not require change in a fixture or pole. If a shielding requirement is adopted, staff recommended a five-to-10-year amortization. That's on businesses. That wouldn't be on what we're talking about with Duke. According to staff regulations, we have now very good town regulation, 1025A, addressing lighting, and it was adopted in November of 2005. And that was the zoning and planning board. The asset management board met on October the 23rd, and there was a discussion of the future of the asset management board. They have pretty much pulled together everything that we had asked them to do. Chairman Ellis explained that the board was formed as an ad hoc task force and eventually involved into a standing board that meets monthly. He felt that the board had completed what it was tasked to do and may no longer be needed. And he polled everyone, all the board there, and the, there was unanimous agreement that they'd completed what we had asked them to do, that really don't have anything to need about now, and they're ready to kind of wrap up their business. They've got a, or have put together a really good booklet that has all of our different properties listed and descriptions of all of them. It's been a very productive board, but they've come to the end of their useful, they've come to the end of having something to do. And he said they're not planning on meeting in December, but would meet in January and February and would, and asked me to request our board to dissolve that committee. And if he said, and several of them, in fact, most of them mentioned, if anything came up individually afterward, that they'd be happy to participate in an ad hoc committee to, you know, to address any single issue that came up. So, I guess there's no rush for us to do it tonight. We could maybe do that at the December meeting when we're doing our board appointments and so forth.
One thing there, one of the things that they were tasked with was to take each of our 50 properties, 51 properties, and say whether to keep it, repurpose it, or sell it. Is that done under each of those items, whether to keep it, repur, because we haven't had anything other than dam properties recommended for sale? And if we've got properties that we could put back on the tax rolls, I feel it'd be our obligation to do that.
Yeah, they have recommended all that they would recommend for sale. You know, we looked at the one over, at the property on the other side of the dam. And then, with the highway department looking to put a bridge across there, there were just too many unknowns. So, that would be one that we would revisit at some point in the future. But other than that, there aren't any recommendations to sell.
Okay. Just wondering about those that are up there on the...
The lots up on the...
The lots up on the hill there. And I know we've been looking at that, trying to get a builder interested maybe in some low end.
Those are some of them.
Spruce Hill. Right. So, those are kind of what I was wondering if they mentioned anything about.
Brad, do you remember what specifically was in the book about those?
Yes, sir. Interestingly, we've had a little bit of movement concerning the Spruce Hill properties. I met with Doug Kelly, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago, and we were just kind of in a little bit of impromptu meeting, kind of knocking around ideas of the potential of maybe a public-private partnership, whereas the town, you know, having that property, kind of what Mr. Braun came up with originally. And I did some research, did a good bit of research. And while public-private partnerships are tricky in the state of North Carolina, as long as there's a public purpose, that being the nexus to get you where you need to be, and there's obviously not available local enterprise that is fulfilling that need, and that need being low-income median income housing, or also known as workforce housing or affordable housing, then, you know, it's something that definitely could be done. One of the things that I need to get before you guys, before you just start any project, you've got to, you know, initiate and figure out a concept. And the thing kind of boils down to, if you're going to do something like that, you really need to form, and don't gasp, a housing authority. But it doesn't...
Gasp.
Wait a minute. I said, don't gasp. I said, don't gasp. There's housing authorities, and then there is the council acting as a housing authority, specifically for something as small as this. I also had a very interesting phone call today from another resident on Spruce Hill that owns a big parcel of land that's contiguous to two of our parcels, that is interested in possibly donating it to the town. So, and this is just all kind of coming up in the past two or three weeks. So, and I'm, you know, I've spoken to the town manager, and I've been given the green light to pursue some of this stuff, at least, you know, let's keep the can down the road a little bit and see what happens with it. But there may be a potential up there to get some, maybe get a couple of things done and, you know, get that, the town can't give away anything by North Carolina general statute. But in the right situation, we could certainly, you know, instead of going through an upset bid process, if we had a housing authority and we had a plan and we had a direction and we, by ordinance identified that this was a need, then we may be able to do something along those lines. We really get a lot of input from our town attorney as to some of that stuff. It's been tried everywhere with various different levels of success. Charlotte had some good success and then has some abysmal outcomes coming from it. So, but it's, it would be a good use of the property, and it would be a chance, it might be a chance to give somebody the American dream, so.
That's all I'm asking, is that we have properties there. I mean, I have 51 properties. Surely, there's some we can't do anything with, so it's, recognize those or highlight those and see if we could do something to sell them and drive back on the tax rolls.
Yes, sir.
I'd add to that, if there's any of them that are marketable, as bad as we need funds, it certainly would be a good time to reduce that number of 51.
Well, a lot of those 51 properties are just little bitty spots, like where we have a well or a water tank, or there's one over near Fire, I mean, Sunset Cove, that's just, it was just a little piece that was left when a road moved, and it's of no value to anyone, but it's a piece of property. And it's a little spot of gully, probably not as big as this room, would you say, Brad?
Yes, sir.
And nothing could be done with it. And then, we've got the, was it two parcels over there that were donated by the Moore family that you, or maybe three that it's just so steep you can't build on, you know, they, I'm sure if they could have marketed it, they would have. And...
Well, maybe we might get, who's Charlie, the chairman?
Yeah.
Do a presentation to us, so we can understand what that, what that, that report has determined.
Yeah, I'm sure he would do that.
I think that would be something, be good for me.
It'd be a nice final way to close.
Yeah.
They present, and then this board closes.
Yeah.
But then, you have the document, and it is a, it is a great document. It's been worked on over the years. Brad just recently kind of re-formatted some of it, freshened up some of the maps, and it's a good document for you to study before a presentation, so you can ask good questions.
Yeah, there was also a recommendation to put it on the website, so anybody could go on there and look that, see what all property the town has and what each piece is used for.
Well, it's even like those properties, maybe adjacent owners would be interested in it.
Yeah.
To attach to theirs, that we at least get a dollar or two back on tax rolls.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's all. I just want to try to highlight them one more time before we close them out.
So, could we try to agenda that then for the December meeting and before that meeting, if we can all have access to this document, book, so we can review it?
Is it on? We have it digitally.
Yes, sir. It's completely digital. I can, I can give it to you all by nine o'clock tomorrow.
All right. That'd be good.
We appreciate it. And you can flip through and look at each individual property, tell them all about it, all the research that they've done. And it's, yes, it's a very valuable document that...
With the one caveat that I also told the asset management board, evidently, Mr. Braun was some sort of super genius with Excel, which I'm not, and it's such a problematic thing. I have one or two things happening on some pages that are just kind of head scratching that I cannot figure out how to fix. So, just be advised, you will run across at least two pages of what in the devil is that? And it's actually part of a picture from another page, and I can't get rid of it.
No problem.
Okay.
We're all rookies on computers anyway. Most of us.
Thanks, Brad. John?
Yeah, I would just say that the board, yeah, I mentioned this, they need two more meetings, and the next meeting there... In the next meeting, they're planning to review the inventory list one last time, determine uh, the bullet points to, to document, to send to council and provide with any recommendations. So there was a, they're planning to do that anyway, yeah. And the board unanimously agreed not to hold a December meeting, so.
January?
Yeah, so they'll.
January then.
I think January would be.
Be January?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe January before they can come.
Thank you, John.
Well, can we agree that um, Shannon, if with Charlie, and it'd be either to put it on the agenda for the December, January meeting, whatever works for him since he's volunteering his time?
Yes.
All right, that's my report.
Okay, any questions for John? Steven?
Uh, sure. Uh, the BOA met on October twenty-third, they only had one case, it was a conditional use permit for the owners to establish a garage apartment. Uh, this was a situation where the garage is already there and the room is above and turning it into an apartment without changing the exterior of the structure, the conditional use permit was approved. Uh, there were no Lake Structure Appeals Board hearings for this month, or this past month, and there are currently three hundred twenty-two vacation rental properties active to date. Uh, the, normally the Board of Adjustment and Lake Structure Appeals Board is held on the fourth Thursday of every month, however, for this month, November, it'll be held next Tuesday, I mean, it's held the fourth Tuesday of every month, next month, this month, it'll be held next Tuesday, November the twentieth, uh, because of Thanksgiving holiday coming up. So it has been advanced a week before November. The Parks and Recreation Board met uh, November the first. Uh, one of the things we did was Dana Bradley from the AmeriCorps came with Robin Schultz and introduced him to the board. He is our new coordinator for AmeriCorps. Uh, he will be with us up until July of next year. Uh, of course, you saw earlier tonight Diane Barrett and her husband Bruce are moving and therefore she had to resign her position on the Parks and Recreation Board. Uh, the board discussed appointing Maureen Bay, uh, which is the only alternate and currently the alternate, and uh, we will take that up on the agenda later this evening. The board did unanimously nominate Maureen Bay to fill Diane Barrett's position, and that position currently terminates December thirty-first to two thousand and nineteen. Uh, so, uh, they also discussed filling other vacancies which we will deal with next month during our normal appointment process. Uh, in the September meeting, uh, we had a couple of maps. Uh, one was dealing with the traffic, traffic pattern in Morse Park. Uh, the other one was dealing with the speed limit issue on Memorial Highway. We're going to be discussing speed limit issue later tonight, so at that point in time, I'll brief what occurred on the Parks and Recreation Board. Regarding the maps, uh, for changing the traffic pattern in Morse Park, after a detailed discussion, the board recommended uh, not doing anything uh, at this point in time to await the, whenever the new marina is constructed and, and then traffic pattern would change anyway as a result, so there's no sense in doing anything at this point in time, just leave the traffic pattern as is. And that was, again, was a unanimous board recommendation. Uh, there's a, Laura has posted on the website, there's a new, and it's also in your packets, about a new parking uh, pattern up at Eagle Rock, uh, which is a pretty detailed thing. And for any folks that want to go up to Eagle Rock, uh, to take those trails or whatever, there is a parking pattern and, and parking is so sparse, you have to try to make reservations whenever you want to go up there for the time being. Um, the flowering bridge, the exterior structure of the kiosk is now completed, uh, and, and the eight panels are up. Uh, the panel, or the eight panels will be going up in the educational part of that kiosk. The panels will feature history of the town and other information for the public. Uh, the sign process has been completed and that's on our consent agenda tonight to approve their park sign. And uh, that's it.
Okay, we have a question, Commissioner Kielbe?
Not a question, but can I step back to LEB just for one second? Um, and just make Shannon and Dean aware, I received a phone call last week from someone downstream, uh, in regards to uh, the water levels and stuff. And I'm just thinking, if we don't have one and if we do not have one of it, that we've put together, maybe think about putting together an official policy and statement as to what our official statement is on the control use of the dam in regards to downstream levels. Um, lady was pretty upset, uh, saying that we, the town as, as owners of the dam are destroying her property by opening the floodgates. And I tried to explain to her, you know, that we let out, we try to let out what comes in and be consistent with that. Uh, but I think if we had an official policy or statement so people could understand what our obligation is and what, what we do, I think it would be, it would be a good thing. You know, I, I wanted to think, well, if I could take that picture that Laura had on the web, of the water, you know, waves coming down above Jimmy Rocks, just to say to her, well, if the dam wasn't here, this would have been, what would have been coming down through your, in front of your house. I looked at it too, it's not that much damage, but she expected me to have an answer for her, so if we had an official statement of some kind, I think that'd be a good, good thing.
Shannon, uh, you correct me if I'm wrong, but are we not on a schedule to make a presentation to the Rutherford County Commission in regards to, you know, this similar subject? Uh, they've asked us to come there and, and address them. Uh, I, I believe it's, you know, this is the kind of thing that they are looking here from us, and it's an opportunity for us to kind of set the record straight about what, what our dam is and what it isn't.
Exactly.
And so, uh.
So, so we're thinking we're probably going to shoot for February, and it's, and it's basically a PowerPoint presentation on why we do what we do, uh, and, and, and share that information publicly with the county commissioners.
The people don't, that don't live here don't understand what happens if you jerk the lake down five feet and you've got hundreds of boats that, that are going to mud and, you know, all those different kind of things that are affected. It's not just a matter of, of, you know, the, the water going up and down, it's all the things, the seawalls, the, you know, the shoreline and all that stuff. So I think an official, uh, you know, statement or policy or however it is would be good to, like with that lady, I could say, well, you go to the website and it's right there explains the town's position on that.
Right. I think in preparing for the uh, presentation on February, we'll probably pull some of the, those things together. And I think it's, really comes down to standard operating procedure, uh, and trying to make sure that we.
Well, that, we, we could send that to relight confuser, good, so we wouldn't have to worry about it.
No, I, I think a lot of folks are under the impression, you know, that, that the storage volume in the lake is sufficient to be holding a major storm event, and it is not. And they're not aware of just how quickly, uh, the lake fills. When we create that kind of, uh, storage, we are simply giving ourselves a chance to manage the flows. It gives us a chance to respond, you know, to the spiking floodwaters when they come down there. It's not intended to, you know, hold up an entire storm event that we can discharge a little bit at a time later on. And I think that's a misconception.
It is a misconception.
And we need to.
And it's, yes.
Facts and figures in front of people and explain that to them.
Because, because this, this town has a dam, somehow we're supposed to, to impede and act of God. I mean, it's, it's, a storm's a storm, and when the Rocky Brook River rolls as high as it rolls, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna roll downstream. And some people feel like because we have a dam, somehow we're supposed to ensure that they don't get the water downstream.
Well, I'm, I'm curious, uh, and John, if, if you maybe sensed this from that discussion, uh, does it seem like that she's upset about destruction of her property when we release the water through flood, floodgates, only from what has occurred this year during storms or just through regular release?
Through storms.
Okay.
Specifically the la- the last one we had where we were supposed to get three inches running, we were not.
Yes, okay.
And we weren't just getting it, it was, it was up there, so it had to go down there.
So, so through our normal release, we're not destroying her property the way she views it?
No, it's, it's only on the act of God, you know, stop. And, and, but she needs to understand, we can't control.
I, I empathize and I sympathize with her on, on the property issues, but there's absolutely not a lot we can do. And we can't, we can't always drop it five to seven feet to allow for storage. I mean, we, we can't, so.
And then the one that we did, if you remember.
Yeah.
We forecasted it sixteen and a half inches and we probably got six.
And, and the lake rose, and I watched the graph and the lake rose five feet in eighteen hours that night.
So. The last, the last, the last storm, we took the lake down to the point where in no time during the actual event did we send more over the dam than was coming into the lake.
Right.
So we had released it early enough and slow enough to where we had some capacity to absorb the shock, and then once we had had it uh, the level we wanted to maintain, we never let the water level or the volume go over the dam more than what was coming in. And so that, that was helping, uh, but.
They don't see that part.
Well, no, it's, and it's, if you get a flood, somehow we're responsible for the flooding because we have a dam and that, some folks believe because you have a dam, you're supposed to be stopping high waters from rolling over the dam. And it's just, it, it's hard to explain.
Some education.
Well, somehow, and, and we also have discussed getting our engineers involved in something. I mean, it's one thing for the town, us to, you know, stand here and say we don't do that, um, but it would be another thing if we had some professional engineers stand up and say, they don't do that.
They can't.
They can't do that.
That's right.
You know, I, I support wholeheartedly and, and I believe we've done very well and with a lot of concern for the folks down, down river.
Absolutely.
And, and Dustin, we notify them whenever we're, and, and announce to them, with certain ones, we call, uh, every time that's gonna happen.
There's, there's already a notification procedure that we follow every time.
Right, right. So, I mean, you know, we're doing all we can to alert them and, just like we do our own residents, so I, I really don't.
Well, this lady, this is, this is seasonal home, she's not here all the time, so she probably wasn't here when the water was coming down from the lake that was coming. She came back and there was a little bit of damage and she's upset she wasn't here to see what really happened, so, so that, that's what we get into. I just need to take up a bunch of time with that.
Something we, we need to work on, we need to address that, yeah. Okay, um, so Steven, anything else on your?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm done, thanks, sir.
Any other questions? If, if not, then um, I think that completes our council liaison reports. Uh, that brings us to the item six, which is public comment. I have the signup sheet, there was, no one signed up, but that does not mean at the last minute if someone out there would like to say something, if you would come forward to the podium, identify yourself and where you live, uh, we give you five minutes if you need it.
I'm Lewis Kenyon, Wendell Front Prime Circle.
Yes, sir.
And the comment I have is relating to exactly what you've been talking about, and that's the downstream flow. Um, particularly with the heavy rains, I know it's a difficult task, um, but when you open the floodgates, a lot of water goes. And I don't know, what I was wondering is, do we have procedures to determine how much water we let out, when we let it out, and how fast we let it out? I mean, uh, an inch in the lake is twenty million gallons of water, you know, with nothing coming in. Um, a foot is two hundred and thirty million gallons, five feet of dropping lake level with no input is a billion gallons of water. Now, do we monitor any downstream gauges when we're releasing?
Downstream gauges?
Downstream river gauges. Do we monitor the river gauge when we let water out the dam at the floodgates?
I know there is a gauge, right, Dustin, but?
We have, we have one downstream gauge, it's up close, uh, just.
Near the sewer plant?
Just below the sewer plant.
When I left the website, it said it's not working.
It is, it is out of commission because of the location.
Yeah.
But we do have a request put in to have it serviced.
The way in which the discharge is, is regulated is, is um, we, we anticipate the amount of flow. Our, our tributary area to this lake is ninety-five square miles.
I understand it's enormous.
Ninety-five square miles. And this is, of this size lake, for a tributary of that size, is extremely small. So our storage capacity, our ability to buffer the flows coming in is very, very limited.
I understand that, I understand.
What we try to do is we match, uh, we, we monitor very closely the flow upstream in the river. We have two gauges up there we look at, so we know what flow's coming down the river, and we look at the actual level of the lake adjoining the dam, so that we try to stabilize that level. We don't let it, uh, we don't, we, we regulate the outflow to stabilize the lake level, is what we do.
Okay, I, I maybe with that, when I look at the last two, the one that occurred the other day, um, during the peak of the, the lake was dropped three or four feet, below its normal, while the river, so it's dropping. The second one, uh, was a river top, the lake was taken down five or six feet?
Seven, I think.
Okay, along ladies, before we got the rain, it absorbed everything, but it wasn't as much rain as anybody expected. This last one, Michael, the lake was taken down several feet below its normal level when the river was ahead of a flood stage. The thing I'm worried about is the river's in flood stage, and that's, that's an act of God. Once somebody opens a floodgate, that's an act of a person. If we may as a town have a liability risk there because of damage we're causing on top of what the flood would have done normally.
What if we had not done anything and just let the water keep flowing?
When the lake, when the river's down, the lake's here and it's raining, you lower the lake, but adds to the river flow significantly. And these occurred over a short period of time. This last one, I noticed it went up and back down very, very quickly downstream, so the floodgate's been open that long.
Well, when we, when we raise those floodgates to, to start to lower the lake, we do not raise them enough to flood down, downstream.
Well, I disagree with that.
Do you have a recommendation, sir?
One, one recommendation was that we closely monitor the downstream river level.
Sir, talk to us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
That you monitor the downstream river level.
Okay.
And let the floodwaters out slowly instead of all at once, so you don't get a wattle of water running down.
So, so you're recommending not lowering the lake at prelude?
Lower the lake ahead of time if you can, uh, you can't always anticipate that. And when you're running with, with flood conditions, drop the lake slowly to keep it, let's say, don't raise the level of the lake, let the lake stay where it is, but don't drop the level below its normal level during any flood stage.
I'm not aware that we do that, and, and I, I'd have to go back and look at the hydrograph. I take your word that you saw that, but in any time that I've been, and I've been directly involved with the engineers in terms of regulating the, the lake level and the discharge amount, I never recall an incident in the last three storms where during the incident of the storm, we were lowering the level of the lake. And that's what you're saying we did.
I, I know you did that for, um, the first one and the last one.
Well, during Hurricane Michael, it was lowered and we, we voted that night, that council to only lower it to one foot, which is where it would already was, and to leave it and wait and see. And then after the rain started, I- And then after the rain started, I think it went down, early in the rain process, it went down another foot. It didn't go, I don't think, below two feet during that whole storm. And the rest was management. The gates were open to manage the inflow and let out what was coming in. But we didn't lower it anymore than a couple of feet during Michael. During Alberto, we dropped it seven feet as prelude.
Before it ever rained?
No, not before it ever rained.
Yes, we did.
Yes, yes, sir.
The river was already in flood stage when we dropped it in for Alberto.
It couldn't have been in flood stage.
The river, the downstream river?
No, couldn't have been.
Well, I talked to a guy two weeks ago. He said he's lived on the river for thirty years. He said his house has only flooded twice. Both of them were this year. When was in May?
We've had more rain this year than we've had in thirty years. It's pretty simple explanation. Sixty-five inches of rain, we don't normally get that. I've lived here thirty years. We've never had rain like we have this year. Never.
Except during ninety-six flood.
Well, but not over the whole, the whole period.
If you look at the ninety-six flood, that was probably more water.
There's eleven inches of rain in three hours coming from all around us, the whole tributary, I mean, the whole.
Well, the thing that, you know, there's a lot of detail here. There's a lot of going back and forth disagreement over what folks are saying are the facts. I'll tell you that last two times, we were operating under the authority of dam engineers and were directly in contact with the dam safety of North Carolina. And so everything we were doing was being communicated outward with engineers in North Carolina, right there approving everything that we did.
The one fact is what I think we do is you don't monitor the downstream river level. I think we should monitor that.
Okay, so that's a recommendation?
And he said it's already been a work order put in to have it fixed.
Yeah, but even like Commissioner Kildare was saying, even with the downstream monitoring, if we didn't open up a floodgate at all, it's gonna come over top of the dam and we can't control how much water is gonna.
And based on a dam inspection, we can't allow that.
Well, I'm not recommending raising the water level on the dam at all, but don't drop it during flood.
Okay, I think by policy, we could say it's not our intent to drop the level of the lake while the downstream river is at flood stage. And if we're doing that, then we'll monitor it and make sure that we don't need to do that. Does that satisfy your?
Yeah, from your earlier discussion, I think that would be something that would be a very positive statement to the people of Rutherford County.
I mean, I hope that the people in Rutherford County understand that Lake Lour is extremely concerned about the downstream property. Every event that we've gone into, as we've organized our emergency response team, downstream has always been a high priority with us not to do that. And that's why, you know, much to the chagrin of some of our own citizens here who have boats on that lake, when we've lowered that lake to create that storage, in the case of the, Michael, we purposely discharged early because we didn't wanna overlay, because a storm was supposed to come up the river and we didn't wanna overlay the outflow on top of it. So five days before that storm was supposed to get here, we lowered that lake down, was it five feet?
At least five. Florence was great.
And so, and so, you know, I just, there are times when, you know, when we can't accurately predict because the forecast is wrong, what the rainfall's gonna be. We have to react to a storm and emergency condition and we try, just try to do the best that we can. It's not like we've got a, we're asleep at the wheel up here and we don't care about the people downstream and we just pull the plug when we see the lakes getting full. Because that is, nothing could be further from the truth in terms of the way we manage our lake levels here in that.
Okay, guy, two weeks ago, his impression was just what you said.
Well, it's wrong. And that, and we need to be able to do what the town manager and others have suggested is to prepare a presentation that explains just exactly what our policy is and the way in which we've been managing the dam. And I think, I think people would, if they saw that, would appreciate the care that we have been taking.
You might look closely at Alberto because I think the lake was dropped significantly.
I will.
The river was in flood stage.
We take snapshots of all that, you know, during the course of it to make sure in the after report that we know what the heck we did. But we shouldn't be, I mean, that would not be the way we would normally operate that dam. The only situation I could foresee is if, if a storm came in and we were down a foot and suddenly the rainfall projection went from three inches to fifteen inches and we said, "You know what, we don't have, it's already raining, we're already discharging, that river's full down there and we don't have enough storage to deal with the storm." We could in that instance have to discharge, just to protect our dam. I mean, could you imagine?
The dam coming out.
Catastrophic effect. And even just the effect of it overtopping, there's an unrestricted flow going over the entire weir of the dam. It would be, the flooding downstream would be catastrophic. And so that's what we try to avoid that, you know, is what we do.
But I can assure you, in every discussion I've been aware of, that downstream was considered, even to the inconvenience of the Lake Lour owners. We've had several of them call up because their boats were hanging in the air or in mud. But the other thing I think you may be addressing is one time, we had two gates open and because of the inflow, we didn't drop the lake level. What we did is we opened that third gate. We got the engineering to go ahead and open the third floodgate. Didn't drop the level of the lake, all we did was open another gate to handle that mass of water coming in. And that may be what you're talking about. Two gates were open, we then went up a third one for safety. We got the engineer's approval. We didn't change the other two gates, we just lowered the third one to handle that extra mass of water coming in. I believe that may be.
The gates this year, from my understanding from historical records, we had the gates open wider this year than they have ever been open. And that includes ninety-six where it overtopped because the gates got hung up. Couldn't get the third gate open. And so this year, we had the gates open thirty feet, that's three gates up ten feet.
Ten feet, that's the maximum, yeah.
Yeah, and then the other storm, we had two of them up twelve feet before we started opening the third, so.
And the lake level was still rising when we had those three gates open ten feet?
Yes, lake's still coming up.
That's how much was coming down the river.
We opened that third gate that time because it just kept coming up.
It was about three quarters of an inch every fifteen minutes with all three of them open.
So I believe that's what happened is we opened that third gate, but it was necessary. The other two couldn't let it all through.
I'll also tell you this, I've lived here full-time twenty-seven years. And this year, for the first time that I can remember, the lights at the damn operation house have been on all night. We've had people staying there, we've had people sleeping there, we've had people on the dam monitoring, we've had people below. It's been a process this year that we've never experienced before because we had to. And, you know, the staff's done a great job in monitoring and staying on top of that.
The only thing over there is you've not been monitoring the downstream level. And, you know, anybody's got a telephone. You can almost do a visual if somebody had to go down looking, call. And I think the times where the river downstream has probably gone up thirty feet, maybe more.
Yeah, well, that's happened and it can happen again. We can't help what's coming in, I think is what everybody's saying. That we've done the best we could, keeping in mind the downstream properties. We'll continue to do that and that's the best we can do.
I'm sorry for looking away. It sounds like you're over here because of the speaker.
Part of it, I think, part of it too has to do with, you know, it's before we had updated floodplain maps. We have a floodplain illustrator in the room. And, you know, that building that house on the river, by the river, in a floodplain is a pretty place to build a house, but with kind of a weather change we're experiencing and the flash floods we're not experiencing, we get rapid rise in water like we've never experienced before.
I'm not aware of any houses being built on the river now downstream.
Sir, may I finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Houses are built in the floodplain on that river. And if you pull the floodplain maps up of Rutherford County, you'll see houses have been built in the floodplain. So when it, sir, may I finish? So when it rains and the water rises like it's been rising, you're gonna see houses down there, water in the yard and water coming up the side of houses. We know that it's happened and it's gonna happen in the future. Part of it has to do with where you build your house. And when you build it in the floodplain and you get a rapid rise in water, you're gonna see water in the yard and maybe up on your house.
Are you talking about recent construction?
If I may.
I'm talking about any house that's built in a floodplain.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Public comment's usually limited to less than five minutes. The gentleman's made his point.
I agree.
And we've had a very healthy debate on the issue and we do realize there's some things we need to address. But I suggest we move on, we still got a pretty lengthy agenda.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, all right, well, anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm from a personal point, I don't have the engineering.
Okay. Well, just come on up and introduce yourself and tell us where you live.
I'm on my campus, we have 105 Trium Bay.
Okay.
Yes, and we have a place on the river. We have never been called for, about the river, ever. Didn't I hear that they call generally? Never.
Do we, you wanna, we have a call list, right?
Right, we've never been called.
Have you ever asked to be put on the list?
No, I didn't know there was a list.
We'll take care of that tonight.
Okay, perfect, perfect. The other thing was, there was a no wake zone buoy in a tree beside of our house. How did that get over the dam? If it wasn't so much pressure sucking it through, how did it get there?
It could have come loose from the moor and gone through the trash gate.
How did it get through?
We have a trash gate that opens up now and it lets sticks, logs, debris go through.
Okay, all right. The other thing was all in the field, it was fish. Now, the environmentalist, which I'm, I mean, I'm an environmentalist to a certain extent, that was really bad because the birds were coming in getting the fish that were in the fields. Okay. The other thing is someone told me that I would not sleep well at night if I knew the condition of that dam, as far as, you know, crap. I don't know. This is all personal, this is all female, it's no engineering, it's just emotional. And the other part, I just wrote a few notes. The water was over the top of the chimney of our outdoor fireplace? Never. I don't think even the people that built it years ago thought it would go to the top of the fireplace. There was a man who took lots of pictures, y'all may have seen them in the magazines or whatever. He said, "He has them if y'all need anything," you know, visible. Let's see, I think I'm about done. The main thing was it cost us thousands of dollars because now we are having to build back our retaining wall of boulders bigger than that desk because the river ate the dirt, took them back to the river. So, you know, it was, it was disheartening to come in and see the damage of this beautiful place.
Is your house, the House of the Covered Bridge?
Yes. You probably saw it.
I saw it being built and wondered why the water was being hit there. I understand, but, you know, I can't imagine. And it was even designed for flood. The foundation, it was, it was. So then you, floodwater was coming, you need to sue your realtor that you bought that flood. He might be completely responsible.
I don't know. But really, you know, Twelve Mile Post called us and said, "Hey, you better come down and look at your river house." Because it was so close to the top of the covered bridge. And if y'all saw it, it was just heartbreaking. I had to roll my pants up to my knees to hike from the main road sixty-four over to the cabin.
How long have you owned that?
Seven, eight years.
This is not, this is not the first time it's happened in the last twenty-five years since a house was built. It happened a number of different times before you bought it.
Well, we were not told that.
I don't doubt that.
Of course not. Ma'am, I had, I had, my house is on this side of the dam. I had boulders six times the size of that podium that were washed away. And it was just, I mean, when that much water comes down the mountain, there's nothing anybody can do. The alternative to be, if we did, if we, if we didn't monitor that dam per the specifications of the engineers that look at it, the whole dam would be, could be compromised and then we would have a mess.
Exactly.
I think it's, we should, it should be sufficient that, that we are doing everything we can to, in a lot of respects, putting the people downstream, their interest above the people on the lake. But when a rain like that comes, the water's gotta go somewhere. And what happened to your house is very likely gonna happen again.
I have not, maybe it's the hundred-year flood.
Well, it's a hard truth. If the dam wasn't there, it would have been much worse.
Well, I'm sure, and the lake wouldn't have been there. So, but we were never called, that's the main, number one thing. Now, I didn't, was not aware there was a group, even having a home on Lake Lour, I was not aware there was a group that calls the people down.
It's easy, it's easy to get you on the list, the fire chief is taking note.
Well, that's right, but this is hindsight, you know. So I'm just telling you, this is from a woman's point of view, not my degrees and all that.
Well, for what it's worth, you can sleep pretty well at night knowing our dam, based on everything that we can tell, is fine. It needs some repairs, it's a hundred years old, it needs to get fixed up. But it is, at this point, we have no reason to believe there's any danger and we are managing it very carefully to make sure that, that we don't put it in jeopardy by overtopping or, you know, otherwise putting it under stress that it can't handle. So you should know that, that we.
Well, we're very blessed to have a home on Lake Lour and one on the river. So it just is a double sword. That the home we have on Lake Lour is just fine, but the one down there, it got dinged. But I mean, I just wanted people to be aware now to be on the list and all the things in the basement. If we had been warned a little bit before, we could have got them off, off the floor maybe. It's concrete floor, it's not like a dirt floor basement.
Ma'am, are you on the code red alert system? Okay. And that's changing to what's called Everbridge, I believe. But again, the fire chief and Ms. Cridgie will get you in on that list. And then I don't know if the alerting system for down river is a separate or is that still part of the code red?
It's separate, but that list we contact by following each person.
Okay, so those are individual calls to property owners. So we'll get you on that list too. And that way you'll get notified both ways. And of course, if we didn't open the dam and the lake flooded, then your place at 105 Trium Bay is gonna get the problem. I mean, you know, so, I mean, I don't know where it's out of land, but just one property to the other.
I just wanted to know what happened and it was just not.
And I'm not minimizing the plight at all. I understand you say it's hindsight, but that's how a lot of problems get fixed, just through this hindsight.
The last whole thing, then I will be gone. The children, when they play in the river in front of our cabin, it's awesome until the water starts coming. And I've kind of figured out what time they let it out. I don't think it's on a scheduled time. You know, sometimes around eleven o'clock, you can almost hear it from the bridge, you know, as it's coming down. And then they cut it off about four o'clock. Am I not right? Is the dam person here?
No.
That's too bad, but.
We didn't know you were coming.
We normally.
You knew we were gonna have this subject.
The way that the water is discharged past the dam is normally not through those floodgates at all. We don't open those unless there's a flood. The water is discharged through the generation system.
Oh, okay, well, the generator.
My understanding is, is that the generation system, I just read that, we've been running the generation system twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So the flow down that river may vary somewhat because they can regulate the generator, but it should be a continuous flow while we're generating power, which is pretty much all the time now.
We can maybe do that this year because of the amount of rain we've had. Normally, we cannot, we're not able to generate power like that.
Exactly, 'cause sometimes I can walk across. 'Cause sometimes I can walk across the river to the island without almost getting, not getting.
Yeah, and that's when we're not generating, yeah, but we, for now, I think we've been generating pretty well, month after month, at that, at that level, haven't we? Yeah.
Well, I did call the dam itself, there was a number, and ask them if they could please, like, do some kind of air raid sound or something when, or even the generator people, when it's coming, or when they're turning it on. And they said, no. Why not?
Well, 'cause it can, that can, as they're generating power, that can go up and down while power generation is actually happening.
Yeah, but could they not let that go, so?
Then we'd be getting calls from people getting tired of hearing that siren.
The drowned children or people wouldn't be good either. So, that was all, it was, that was a suggestion. He said, no, and I dropped it, but.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, so.
That's okay.
And I'm not sorry about what happened to us, but, but I appreciate what y'all do, and what, anything you can do to help us, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're the best. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, if there then are no other, I assume, members of the public wanting to speak, then we'll go ahead and move into the next item, which is the consent agenda. And we have taken item B out of the consent agenda, which leaves item A, adoption of the regular town council minutes, and C, which is the Flowering Bridge's permanent sign request in there.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
So, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cameron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. All right. That brings us to item eight, which is unfinished business. We have one item of unfinished business, which is ordinance 18-11-13, which is ordinance proclaiming a municipal declaration to repeal and enact speed limits. Is that something, Brad? You, you handle that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
My report's in here, I'd kinda like to stipulate to it, and then she'd like to go through it. Basically, this was, this was a, in the process of a local business owner upgrading his facility, and actually getting a second business in that facility. Some concerns raised over parking, which led to other concerns about traffic, which led to, hey, come out here and take a look at this. And the site visit did seem to indicate that where the speed limit is currently, where it transitions to 35 when you come out of the beach area, right before you get to Lake Luer Landing, right before the parking lot that the, adjacent to the big rock wall where the condos are, is where it goes up to 35 miles an hour. And if you stand there, and also if you look at your exhibit in your, in your packet, uh, let's see, that is exhibits, page 57.
Six.
Page 57, yes.
57.
So, you can see, you know, there's, not only do you have this, basically what the property owner is calling a throttle-up zone, but you've also got some limited site issues going on here with, with the gas station canopy, all of that other building that's there. Concerns over increased pedestrian traffic, folks coming in to get a sandwich, as well as the traffic from the ABC store, folks from out of town going in the ABC store for a six-pack, no, we don't sell it here, but they got it across the street, and that goes on all the time. And so, that was what precipitated the, you know, looking into this. Immediately went to Chief Humphries and explained to him, you know, the concern with business owner. And Chief Humphries was like, you know, anything we can do to slow down? He said, it's true, it's, it's quick through there, and that's where the speed up is. Anything we can do to keep the speeds down through the beaches is what I would like to see. And so, you know, I took that note that it would ultimately have to be approved by council anyway, but trying to expedite the process. I presented the proposal, which you can see on page 15, 58, thank you, sir, to the state in the form of a, just basically an email, and had a couple conversations with them. And it took a while to, for them to get back, because of the events of the season, they were busy trying to open roads and stuff like that. But once they get back, they were equitable to what you see on page 58. And so, they sent the, their, their necessary documentation, which is included on pages 59 and 60 of your packet, and said, you know, as soon as you want to take this in front of your city council, get that taken care of, we'll, we'll adopt it on our end. Right about that time, we had some additional discussion ensued. Manager at the time, Mr. Nally, gave me the instruction to hold off on this. This was actually after we had met in council, and kinda given me some other instruction to, Mr. Cameron had suggested the seasonal speed limit. I also had been given guidance to look at a 35, a 25, basically the corporate limits to the corporate limits, and the other option was from the, from where it is 35 now, up to Harris Road. It took me a month of Sundays, but I was finally able to get a meeting with NC DOT, which I jumped on, met with them, had a great meeting with them. And they were, and they went through all those scenarios, and I've kinda gone through those in your, in my report with, with pretty much detail. They are perfect, they really like the idea of slowing that down through there, they would like to initiate immediately. Their original, their original, and they actually got in the car and came down here. They showed me their, they've got a log thing that they do. So, this is not, was not done in a vacuum on their office in Orange Street in Asheville, they actually came and looked. They were very equitable to moving it to up beside the sedimentation pond where it is now, and as that corridor develops, because they said, we noticed you built a sidewalk, and now that we know about this trailhead that may be coming up, and the, and when does this ABC store move? And I said, well, we're shooting for midsummer, hopefully, or something along those lines. We're very, they said, we are very equitable to moving, phasing that speed limit 25 miles an hour up that corridor. They gave the reasons, as I said in my report, for not wanting to do the other changes. Also evidently, the, the fact that it is a US highway, has some additional constraints that they've got to follow, or something like that. But at the end of the day, I made, I made a good contact over there, and they were, they tickled a desk to get a copy of the draper map that I sent, and wanted to know how, you know, more to start knowing about, you know, the natural lake that is Lake Luer. I said, oh, no, it's not. So, we had a, a nice discussion, built some camaraderie with them. So, what I have before you here tonight is essentially the same thing, what, the long and the short of it is what they're willing to do right now. This was what was approved in, in the early months. I have had a discussion with Commissioner Weber. Evidently Parks and Rec has made a recommendation after I had already gone to Asheville, so, and, you know, this is not set in stone, we don't have to do anything if y'all want to. But this is what, this is what I'm bringing to you tonight, pursuant to my last meeting. If we wanna go back, talk to them some more, table this, whatever you guys want to do, just give me some, give me some guidance.
No problem. Well, I'm the one that just didn't want it going all the way up the highway.
Right.
I don't have a problem where it is right there, that's just another couple hundred feet.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, that was my main objection, is people travel that road every day, and it's always tough enough to stay down. But, unless there's other discussion, I'll make the motion.
No, I'd like to discuss, just a comment. They did note in here that as the, as to the seasonal speed limit, they, the NC 12 on Outer Banks does utilize the seasonal speed limit. She stated that the road design and the number of average daily trips made the seasonal speed limit practical on North Carolina 12, but did not translate well to the short section of US highway. Well, the only way she would know that would be to make a trip down here, not just one time to see what the traffic is, but see the difference in the traffic during the season and not in the season. But I feel like that's something we could put together, the facts, evidence, and logic to appeal, and have that reconsidered, that, that, that seasonal speed limit.
Well, if I could jump in here a couple of things. Of course, during September, when we talked about this, I said I would take it back to the Parks and Rec Board to see what they recommend, and, and hopefully to come back so we could agree on the recommendation before going to DOT, but obviously, that didn't occur. In October, we couldn't, they didn't meet, they didn't have a quorum, so here I am with this information now. And the Parks and Rec Board did adjust their recommendation, and their recommendation is to, where they had talked originally about the east end of Harris Road by the post office, which I didn't really support, they talked about Night Hollow Way, which would include the new ABC store, and, and the Luermont Trail System dumping out into the highway there. Now, what Brad has said is, is very good. They're willing to make that adjustment as that develops.
Right.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
The other end, they, they originally wanted to go all the way to the town limit towards Chimney Rock, and there's some opposition to that. I came back to them with the recommendation that would go to Boys Camp Road, and they, they came up with Buddy Lane. Their, the Board's recommendation was Buddy Lane, the west corner of it. And the reason for that is because the 50,000 visitors a year to the Flowering Bridge. If that's not adequate to, to justify a speed limit reduction through that area, I don't know what would be. And, and I feel like we should approach them with that information. And, and so, the, the Parks and Rec Board recommended from Buddy Lane to Night Hollow Way. Okay, we're not, not going to Night Hollow Way, go with the pond where they're, they're willing. I'm okay with that. But I really think we ought to consider the, the number of visitors that migrate through the Flowering Bridge, and the reason to reduce that, starting there, all the way around. Now, as far as the seasonal thing, I'm, I'm not in favor of the seasonal thing either. But what we had asked about was the possibility of putting the radar sign, one of the radar signs, as you come around the beach this way. Because that does, that one light, and the radar sign makes people think, and I guarantee you, every time you see a car that encounters one, you see the brake lights come on. And Chief and I have talked about this a few times, which would have the 25, which is already posted, but by the time they get from coming down that hill, where you see the 25, and you're going around the curve, by the time they get to the beach house, they forgot it's 25. And, and so, I think that's what I was looking for, is not a seasonal, but a radar sign prior to the beach house, to, to remind them it's 25. Because right there at the beach house is the worst congestion point for pedestrians coming around that big curve, where you have all the traffic. We are very fortunate, we've never had an accident there. But the day is coming, I hate to tell you, in my opinion.
So, is, is kind of the bottom line, Brad, is what, what you're proposing is all that DOT, DOT will do right now, and nothing prohibits us then from taking what the Board has talked about now, additional consideration on, on either end.
Yes, sir.
As, as we grow up in Memorial Highway towards the post office, and then also ask them to take into consideration the numbers at the Flowering Bridge, and also maybe come back and give us a visit during our peak season to make adjustments. We can, we can still be there, even though we adopt this.
They seem very equitable to you. Well, we have two different declarations from them, page 59 and 60.
Because it's, Mr. Weber's the way the state does things.
Well, one talks about Boys Camp Road, and the other one talks about State Road 1304.
If you look at, or not, 1059, and I called this out to their attention too, and evidently, the state way is, the way it is written currently in their ordinance is the way they have to duplicate it. And so, if you'll notice, 1059 is to repeal speed limits and request for concurrence.
And the other one's to enact.
That is, and the way that is written, and then the other one is to enact speed limits and request for concurrence. The State Road 1304 is, is Buddy Lane.
Buddy Lane.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's hard to believe Buddy Lane is a state road.
I, I, when I said that the first time, and you disagreed with me, I had to go look at it again. I actually even confirmed it at Asheville, it is, it is a state road.
Wow.
Go figure.
Okay.
And, and so, the radar signs, Commissioner Weber, I, if I missed that, I just missed it, because I don't have anything in my notes about that. And, and I just, I would've certainly brought that up to them, but I must've missed that in some discussion, 'cause I sure, I didn't, I didn't even bring that up, just for full disclosure.
Our, our objective is to slow them down coming down that hill, prior to that beach house. Especially, again, that is the worst point for pedestrian traffic congestion, right down that curve.
Well, the problem is so many people don't even, even observe the crosswalk and stop for the.
Right, I know.
That's the big problem.
And, and I don't think a, a crosswalk overhanging light, I don't think that works, 'cause I've seen it not work so much in Chimney Rock.
Well, I tell you what, it does work. I tell you what, it does work, you know, in, like at the beach, they have, they have an island thing, not running this way, but running this way with a sign there with, with a flagpole, that says state law requires that you stop in crosswalks.
And Bob was talking about that too before, I mean, that's, that's the one we need to try to address. I'm okay with us going ahead and approving what they're willing to give us, but I think we need to look at the Flowering Bridge aspect of it. I mean, we're talking upwards of 50,000 people a year now coming through town to the Flowering Bridge, and that's.
And I, I feel certain, I, I live, I lived on really good terms with them at that great meeting, and I, I think I can, I can get, in the next meeting I can get with them, we'll go a lot quicker, I think, so.
So, would it be the case that we could go ahead and, and deal with this proposed ordinance as it, as it stands, and then if that doesn't preclude us from then going back to them and saying, you know, there's some additional work?
Yes, sir. That would be my take, yes, sir.
And then the signage, would you need to budget some money to put in to get some of these signed?
Is that our budget, or is that state budget, such a state road?
It's, it's a state highway, so they'd have to have some skin in that game. I'd have to go over them for approval.
And they would buy them.
They would buy them, I would assume they would, and that's, you know, that's the world governing body, they'd have to listen to it.
We could see, things happen fairly quickly up Memorial Highway, up Commercial Center, ABC Store, so careful about where we put the permanent signs that flash, because we may see that speed limit creep up that road, and we want to at least wait till we get that kind of finalized.
Shannon, would, you know, this continuing discussion in regards to the alternative entrance to Chimney Rock Park have some bearing on the entire traffic?
Huge.
Management situation in downtown Lake Luer, which.
It'll drastically change how we move, absolutely.
And, and we wouldn't do a flashing sign before in next year's budget anyway, we don't have it in the budget, so.
If we paid for it. Okay, so, somebody wanna move this and?
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance number 18-11-13, an ordinance proclaiming a municipal declaration to repeal and enact speed limits.
Okay. So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I said.
Second. Commissioner Kilby, take that. Any further discussion on that? They're being done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay. That moves us into new business. We begin with item A, which Shannon.
We're adopting a, a P schedule that is consistent with North Carolina state law, but he does ask a little additional input on that piece. I'm gonna defer to William on that. Page 65, basically, there's been a, a section added that basically says it's unlawful to disconnect once you disconnect it to the town's system.
May I address that page?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was, and this is just what I've heard, that it's illegal for us to be able to demand people connect to us. I understand that was the case with water, that we couldn't make people connect to us. Now, this was a couple years ago, but when we were doing the water system, we ran into a situation we could not demand.
You can, you can by statute.
Maybe we didn't have a statute that enabled us to do that.
In fact, at one time you could, but that it was, but that was repealed, and you could not anymore.
Yeah.
That's what I'm remembering.
I was there about three years or so ago, I guess.
This happened about two years ago, then?
Yeah, because when, I remember it came up, there was some discussions about when Ingalls went in, they extended water line up there, a number of people were required to hook up, and, I don't guess they had to abandon their well, but they did abandon their well. And when this came up again, a couple years ago, I think it was, so, there was mention made that the state had repealed that, or enacted something that prevented towns from making that requirement anymore.
That's on the water, but sewers handled differently.
That's a smart conversation. That's an important point.
Yeah, go forward. Yeah, go forward here.
Let's make confirmation of that, because.
Let's do some research on that.
Just to be clear, there's nothing in here that's addressing that issue?
Well, it says we have to, any such structure within 200 feet, they must connect.
That's already on the books.
I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying, I'm worried about the state. I just want to make sure that state allows us to force them to do that.
So, the red section that's underlined, page 65, basically saying it's unlawful to disconnect. The paragraph at the bottom and the ones at the top with the strike through, basically are taking out some of the references to a fee schedule established by the town manager, and basically saying it's basically in keeping with a schedule of fees and charges that's adopted annually, as the town adopts its budget. And so that gets updated. The next page is 67, that piece is stricken, and then page 68 basically clarifies about receiving bills through mail or other notice. William, what did I leave out? Do you have any thoughts on what's been?
Oh, the penalty section, which was one of the specific ones I was asked to look at.
Yes.
The way it is done in most places, it's, well, it's made, it's considered a misdemeanor under GS 14-4, which allows you to set a fine up to $500. If you don't set a specific fine, or at least say it like I've got it now, that it could vary, but it wouldn't exceed $500, if you don't mention the $500 limit, it's 50.
Maximum.
So, maximum. So, that's for the board to consider, but I would think that this type of stuff is more of a more serious nature than the $50 fine, which is basically a parking ticket, I mean, some of the things that could happen. So, you can leave it like it is, not to exceed 500, or you can set it like 300. But it's obviously enough stuff covered in here that probably leaving some discretion to the core in terms of the amount, something might be 500, something might be 50.
There's some illegal taps now, so we're dealing with.
Make sure I understand, are we changing, the folks are on a flat fee because they have a well, and there's not a way to measure the water they're using, are we changing that? They're still on that flat, on a flat fee?
Yeah, we're basically recognizing what we're doing now.
I got you.
Okay. So, if you're on sewer only, you're paying sewer only.
Yes.
Flat fee.
Right.
So, if we keep the language the way it is, if it ends up before a judge, the judge, you know, certainly could set the fee if we don't have one, is that what you're saying?
I think the main thing is you want to recognize that it can be more than 50.
Right.
It can be as much as 500.
Okay.
Not every violation will be fined, of course.
In that case, we recommend we adopt as presented, unless there's any other issues.
Okay, so it's something like that.
Where do we say the fee is 500 in the ordinance?
Page 64.
64.
Not to exceed.
I'll be glad to recommend that we adopt the ordinance 18-11-13A, amending section 51, sewer system ordinance of the Lake Lower Code of Ordinances. My only addition there is to make sure we're in compliance with state laws, one on one issue.
I'll defer to William on that.
Yeah, I'll check it.
I'd say on any issues, they're, just make sure everything we're doing is square with the current law.
All right, so we have that motion, can we have a second? Yeah, somebody?
I'll second it.
All right, Commissioner Kilby will second that motion. Any other further discussion or questions? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, that brings us to, let's see, item B. Shannon, 2019 Board Retreat Discussion.
Yes. So, Mr. Weber had asked me to have some sort of discussion about the board retreat. I think that the discussion we had in my office was that he had preferred maybe we have something this December, but it seemingly didn't get picked up in some of our other board meetings, and we just needed to discuss this issue. And so, after having that discussion with Mr. Weber, giving it some thought, I would recommend to the board that we have this retreat December of 2019, and specifically for the reasons that we are making progress. We have a lot of fairly intense capital projects that we're having to focus on. We are getting things done, and not that the board or anybody would do this intentionally, but for us to back up and grab ahold of some other big picture items seemingly may pull us off what I think is a good track right now. We're churning the water to get things done.
Yeah, and the conversation I had with Shannon asked of status on two or three things, and one of them was this. During our February 2018 retreat, as we were departing, and I said we needed to hold the next one in December of this year, just like we did the first one in December of 2016, and also to find a different form with better acoustics. And the reason, the December 2019, I don't think would work, because the reason for this retreat was a prelude to the upcoming budget. And so it's not key to a calendar year, it's key to the budget year. And that's the reason we had it in February, which was delayed, and because a big part of that is supposed to be the presentation of the CIP coming up for the upcoming budget, and that allows you that three or four months in between, five months in between, to massage that CIP, and based on what we've gone over during that retreat, and in preparation for the budget discussions. So, if we do it in December 2019, then we're not going to have one at all prior to this next budget. And the CIP, like I conveyed to Shannon, I said that is one thing, one big accomplishment that Mr. Nally had while he was here, and he gave us a CIP that is very, very good, very detailed, and we need to continue that, in my opinion, because prior to that, we never really had one. All that we ever did have was just two or three line items on the budget, under capital improvements, and then the following year, if one didn't get done, it'd be gone, it wouldn't show up again, something would happen to it. This way, we at least don't forget these capital projects, they're in a schedule, we take the ones we can, but the other ones are still in the program to move forward. So, no, I disagree with the December 19. If we can't do it in December of this year, then at least let's try to do it in January as a prelude to our upcoming budget for our, what are we on, 18, 19 now, so we'd be the 19, 20 budget.
Shannon, I probably would add that, you know, a retreat where we get into kind of planning esoteric type ideas is not something we need to get into right now, because we are doing so well. If what we're talking about is having a meeting to talk about budgets and CIP, that should be part of the budget process, and we will certainly do that. What I'm trying to avoid is another high level discussion about where this town wants to go in the future, although it sounds good. Right now, we're on a good track, and I'd love to see us stay on it.
Could we do this and preserve the CIP rolling along as it has, and take up, I think, a minimal amount of staff time, is we have changes or additions, deletions, so forth, to the CIP, or suggestions to rearrange the order of the CIP?
Yes.
Could we send that out, and let us all look at it individually, and we could perhaps even have a bigger discussion on it at a regularly scheduled meeting, rather than having to set up a retreat and all the?
I think so.
All that goes with that.
I think so. And the reason is, had you been on the staff side of going through Mr. Nally's CIP and his budget process, I think you'd understand that we spent a tremendous amount of hours wrestling with items and numbers that we could have, I believe we could have gotten through much faster. And what I think we could do, and I'm not kicking the CIP in product, what I think we could do is take that existing CIP, review it, tweak it a little bit, and move forward. I would not for going through the same process we went through with Mr. Nally.
And I agree with that. I mean, if you can streamline the current CIP process to make it a better product, go for it. I agree with that. But, so, we want to throw the CIP at us, the massive document, and the budget all at the same time. This past year, we had nine meetings in May and June, and we're going to end up doing that many or more again, probably, with this process.
No, sir.
Not having a review.
No, sir, not with me sitting in this chair, you won't have nine meetings on your budget process, I promise you that. You need to find another manager if that's what your expectation is.
No, it's not my expectation, my expectation is less.
I would make a point as well, it was my first time in this budgeting process, and in the CIP, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not giving the proper weight of importance to things, but I just kind of felt like as a council, we spent way too much time talking about whether we needed to have a bucket truck or not, or whether, I mean, there were items here, or whether a truck needed to be a king cab, or an extended cab. I mean, to me, we focused on a lot of things that I consider to be fairly minor, and the big things, and I had discussion with Ron about this, were the major capital financing items that he just threw in there that skewed the entire budget. He put in $12 million, you know, for a sewer. You know, we needed to have a very detailed discussion about how we were going to debt finance something like that. I mean, to me, those are the big items that we have. How are we going to pay for our dam renovation? Where's that money coming from? How's that going to be capitally financed? Where are we coming up with, whatever the number is now with the sewer, where's that money going to come from? The additional dredging program that you're about to talk about, that's a significant capital, but I'd rather be talking about that stuff than whether or not we need a bucket truck here. I mean, I don't want to be critical of anybody, but to me, these are big numbers.
Well, they are big numbers, but you've also got to make sure that your staff has the right tools to work with, and let me tell you, under a power failure at the wrong time, you'll love that bucket truck.
Well, I don't want to pick on that.
I wouldn't say that truck wasn't important.
I'm just saying, it's probably.
About 3,000 compared to 12 million.
And I understand that ratio, but that truck's also a safety issue, because we're doing things we shouldn't be doing safety wise, so we're fair, our crews in hazard. So, to me, you can't make that correlation. I understand millions of dollars, yes, that's a priority, but also departments have to have their needs filled as far as equipment, so that's what budgeting is about, and that's where Steve's come in with the CIP. That all needs to be blended together, and unfortunately, we're going to have a conversation from a $12,000 boat up to spending $20 million on a sewer system. We have to have that full discussion, and it's just the timing of how we do that.
Well, if we don't, if we don't do a retreat this year, when could we expect to see the CIP?
We haven't pulled that together yet.
Do you have a target date?
I don't. I can't sit here and give you that date right now. We have to come up with that schedule, but we'll come up with a good schedule for you so you can take a look at your capital projects, and we'll create a schedule for the budget process.
When will be comfortable for staff and everyone for our budget timing? Is that going to be in March, April, May? Because, and the reason I'm asking is because then you can back up and say, all right, two months before that, we want to see the CIP.
Right. So, I have not sat down with our finance director and created that schedule yet.
But please look at that.
Can you have that plan for us next month?
I think we can get a general plan together, I do.
Is that, well, that satisfy everybody if he has a plan?
Yeah, yeah. Just get the budget session when you want that, when you want that budget settled. We want two to three months ahead of that, and then two months ahead of that, we need the CIP.
I don't want to go through what we went through last year.
It's a lot of data.
We do not need to do that.
I don't disagree, I just.
There's not another town in this state of the size of 1,200 that went through a process like you were taking through last year.
I've been.
I've never seen anything like it in my, over 20 years.
We spent more time on this one last year than probably the prior eight years combined.
I agree, we did, and I don't want to do that either, but it is a lot of data to absorb.
Yeah, well, and the way it was presented last year was, there was no consistency here of organization to it. Everywhere they're in everywhere, but I think that, well, let our, let the folks in place now, different people, it'll be a different process, let's see what you come up with, come up with your plan, and we go from there.
And don't you think that our project, we've got to go and dictate a lot of that to us?
No.
I mean, you know, you don't have a lot of choice, a lot of things.
I'm fine with not doing the retreat in December 2018, but I don't, I'm fine with not even scheduling one for December 2019 at this point in time.
And that's my way of, that's my way of saying, I'm not against the facilitated discussions at a retreat, where we talk about where is this town going to be in the year 2027, and we start to set some goals. That's a necessary part of our process. But we've been bogged down with that for a long time.
Yep.
And we've not been getting things done. And we are getting things done now, like you can see in your fact, every single month, we're checking things off, and we're getting those things done. And that kind of action is what I think we need, to have a nice, long stretch in getting used, that's how we do business, rather than back up and starting a planning process again. And in that process, we will bring back to you a schedule, lays out our budget process and CIP review. And in no way are we trying to make light of a CIP. It's absolutely necessary for this town. But the last one was very complicated, and I think we can take the existing one, and let staff review it and give their priorities on those top 25 items, and give you some feedback, and let you go through them, and just within a meeting or two, we can get some good direction on what our CIP list should be.
One of the key issues I had with Shannon to share with you is, again, the way it was previously done without a CIP, council would identify a project or talk about it, and if it didn't get funded that year, the next year it wasn't even there.
Didn't show up.
Right.
Wasn't even considered.
That's one of the issues I had, because it didn't mean the project didn't need to still be done at some point in time, so it should have remained on the CIP.
Yes.
And that's one of the key objectives of mine, is to make sure that these things continue to show up year after year until they get funded.
That's right.
Because they still do need to be accomplished.
That's right.
I largely agree.
Okay, so.
I don't think we need a.
Set that aside.
Yeah.
Set aside?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on then, Dean, to the dredging policy discussion. I think you put together a nice white paper for us that kind of lays out where you and Lake Ops think we ought to be heading. So, I think we all, we probably all had a chance to look at it, and you want to hit some highlights, and tell us what you want from us as a council.
Okay, one of the questions that came up from Mr. Cameron earlier was about the budget and the extra $100,000 year to be put away. That has been, that has been put in for, in prior years, but it's one of the first things that gets removed from the budget when they look at the capital improvements or whatever, and they say, well, we're going to take that $100,000, it's going somewhere The way this, the way it was intended to do was to budget for in-town dredging, say 300,000, and then 100,000 was to go into an account that would be utilized in other areas of the lake. It just hasn't happened. I have no problems with dredging other areas of the lake, but I need the funds to do it. And that's this board's job, is to provide that money. If that money's there, we'll dredge anywhere you want to dredge. If you want to cut something short, which we've been crippled with a past dredging contractor, and get in the storms that are coming in, and the situation that we're in in the river, that y'all did budget extra money this year to go into the river and into the main channel of the lake. into the main channel of the lake, and that money's being utilized right now. We've finally got a good dredge contractor in here that's getting something done. As far as next year or the year after that, you know, I'll dredge wherever you want to dredge. One thing I do is I do have a list, I think it's included in your packet, of people who have requested for dredging in their cove or in their area of the lake.
I didn't see that.
I may not have.
Yeah, I don't think you put that in. You rattled it. You didn't put it in there.
You did tell that to us, didn't you? I think I've seen it, but I don't remember where.
There's like seven people or seven entities on there. Firefly Cove, Rumbling Ball, Graylog Cove, there's just, and I've got them on that list, and that list started in 2017, I believe it was. And I've got them sitting there. And once I have money and it looks like we're going to do those projects, I will go out and evaluate each of those projects. I'll evaluate what kind of sediments in the lake, what kind of hazard it is, navigational hazard, how many people does it affect? How would we get that out of there, whether we do it through hydraulic or we have to do it through excavation, how it ends up having to be? And I will bring that information. Each person on that list will have a report. And then it'll go back to the people and say, well, if it's in a cove, how many people are willing to ante up to get their cove cleaned out or to get a certain area? One of the things, an idea is what can they do, what can they do to stop the sediment? A few years ago, we helped in a cove over here where we give the gentleman $15,000 from the town, and then he put $80,000 in, redid his dam, which stops all the sediment from coming into the lake, and he cleans it out on the backside. So that's a win-win for your money. So the thing I try to do is get the best bang for your buck. You know, how much are you going to help? Whatever we can do. And then I'll lay these out. I'll let the LAB prioritize and then make a recommendation to you guys to say, this is what we want done.
And that's why I wanted the conversation for it, because I'm not seeing a percentage of set aside in all of this I'm seeing. I'm not seeing the dollars that, when I was on that board, that, yeah, we were going to set aside so much and put into account. And I realize why it hasn't been set there. But I feel somewhere we need a percentage or a dollar amount, something, because these issues are the same way. The worse the weather gets, and here comes more areas that need dredging. And so we need to go ahead and address these seven or whoever we've got. But as Dean says, there's no money there, so.
I'm chopping at the bit here.
Okay, give me.
Get it done.
Hold on, it's my turn. But if we budget 400,000 a year, do we take 40,000 a year and put it over here for mechanical dredging fund or pleasure dredging? But we need that in this document to say a certain percentage of what we spend is set aside. So that's all I'm bringing up, is that right now, we can't do it, but we need it in this policy.
Well, we all know, like you said, we want, the town has only been able to budget 100 each year since 2007 and not that much for a couple of years. Actually, it was more than a couple. And during, or after I got elected, that first budget year, and I insisted on the dredging becoming an operational line item under lake operation or under the lake in lake operations, as opposed to setting aside this so much for silt reserve fund. So we've only been addressing, and my intent and what I felt we were doing was only addressing that operational line item each year. And we haven't even talked about silt reserve fund during the last couple of budgets that I recall. Now, if you have a list of folks that need dredging done, I would suggest that before we set aside the amount for the budget each year, that you come to us, tell us that list, who needs what and what the anticipated cost is if you can do it. And then when we allocate the amount of money during the budget for operational dredging, it includes that. So, and that's the way I felt it was happening, because I wasn't even thinking about doing that silt reserve fund or even carrying money off. Now, I see where if there's a fund balance at the end of the year, we allocated 400 this year. If there's any leftover, yeah, it goes into that silt reserve. But as far as setting some aside each year during the budget, we're not doing it now.
Well, that silt reserve that you're talking about, correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, that's for emergency dredging. That's if we dredge this year and then we have a major storm. We need money to get the.
And we're dredging this year because of major storms.
Right, right. And this was.
Why wouldn't we, whatever we've got, spend it all on dredging rather than letting it sit in the bank? Because it just, it's, you know, if you've got more coming in, it's going to be coming in on what you've got out there regardless, whether you've got, you've got two feet and another foot comes in on top of it. Well, that's coming either way. Why would you, why would we leave it in the bank if it's for dredging, just go ahead and use whatever we can afford each year to get out as much as we can?
And that's a decision for you guys to.
Yeah, I mean, is there a reason why? Is there a reason that I'm missing why we would need some in reserve? If we've still got silt that needs to come out?
The only thing, this was in place before I came here, was this was set up and that, and it was designed for emergency dredging if they have a storm after they've done spent their year's money. It was just an emergency fund to be able to go grab out of and say, we need emergency dredging done. And also, that money, if it's in, if it's put into a fund like that, that money gets to roll over, opposed to like our budget money and stuff has to be, you know, allocated out for the year. That's an account that allows us to roll over.
Part of that came up the year that we had, maybe the, when it came up, we had a mining permit. Some other things came along that prevented us from spending money that we had set aside. And so we decided to reserve it or keep it for the next year or something. We weren't able to spend it at that, at that time. But I'm just wondering if there's something I haven't thought of that we would need to hold back some money for an emergency, rather than go ahead and spend it when we know the silt's already too high?
Well, I think the intent of that was, and this is strictly intent, you know, it's before me. I think the intent of it was it started after the flood of 96, when they got, you know, dry land out here and they're like, we've got no money. So it actually started back then. They said we would put $100,000 for dredging and we'd put $100,000 in savings every year. And they were actually wanting to build that savings up for 20 years or so to be able to do another big dig like they did in 96. Well, with, you know, today's technology and bigger dredges and things like that, we, I still believe that we can get ahead of it with just annual dredging as long as there's enough money there.
That was the intent of the operational line item, so it would get funded every year because it wasn't getting funded under that process.
Right, and it correct.
Yeah, what happened back then, I guess they had all the, after the big dig, you had all the dredging done that needed to be done. Well, okay, let's put some money aside so when we need dredging again. Where are our mouths? We've got enough silt out there that we don't have enough money to get it all. So let's, you know, let's get what we can and hope we get to the point where we can, we've gotten everything we need to get, okay, now let's set some aside in reserve.
Can you explain the relationship of the grant that we have to the numbers that you have in here? I mean, is it 50% of? Of whatever we, because it seems, just seems to me like there's some connection between what we can spend and what we budget to spend and what we have available in the grant.
In this year and next year, we have to spend $300,000 dredging each year. That's 600,000. And we will receive a 50%.
Half of that.
Half of that back.
So that's this year and next year. And then what happens after that?
Then we have to reapply for.
For another grant to see if we can get.
That was already extended a year because we had to tie the last dredger.
Bed year, and they gave us an extra extension. So we have another, so in a sense, then if that's the caps, then this 300,000 that you have in here, half of that would come in the form of a grant. If we go above 300,000, then 100% of whatever we are above that, we pay for, 100% of, right?
Well, you've got two years, whether you spend 300,000 the first year or whichever match.
Basically.
Yeah, the bottom line is we've got to spend 600,000 in two years. And then we will get 300,000 back to be able to use it.
And in a sense, your recommendation here, which is to say, we spend $300,000 actually each year, that takes care of that six. But now you're also saying that we budget four, which means to me, that then we budget $100,000 in addition to that, which you're saying we don't dredge, but what comes out of our funds somehow, we set that aside. There's a suggestion I'm hearing is why set it aside? Why not just use it? In other words, then why not just dredge 400,000? The 400,000 will cost us $250,000, right? Out of pocket.
Well, this year, the 400, the extra 100,000 was given because of the, because of not getting dredged before. And it was trying to get this trap dredged into the river, because we're so far behind. We've got boats that are going out of the bay here that are hitting bottom. We're going to spend a lot of money this year dredging. And in the past, starting under Chris Braun, Chris Braun was the one who actually brought this extra dredging to light and kind of drove that through here. But starting under him, he was one of the first ones to start taking that 100,000 out as a first thing out of the budget to say, we need the money elsewhere. And it's just continued each year where we've tried to budget an extra 100,000.
And we changed our process as a result. It makes sense that at the end of the year, if we haven't been able to spend it all, then it rolls into a fund, it goes into a fund that can roll over. That makes sense. But I think we need to use that fund if we have the opportunity to use it and dredge with it. Commissioner Moore and Eric Cooley and everybody said.
Policy.
I mean, if we have 147,000 sitting there right now and we can use all of our 400 plus that this year, then we need to use it. But, but the, remember too, that we budgeted 400,000 this year, but the bid was for 432,000 to start with. So we were 32,000 short on what we budgeted and what the bid was for what would be needed. So 30, that 32 needs to come out of the fund anyway to accommodate that. If he can actually get that accomplished, he may not be able to meet that requirement.
Right. Well, that was just a general thing so that everybody was bidding apples to apples. And it was, it's moreover, it's up, what can we get out to that amount? If he can't get that amount, I have no problem with, you know, under y'all's direction, to pull money out of, out of the reserve funds and dredge anywhere else. There's a few places and names that are on that list that can't be addressed until the lake goes down. So it'd be an extra drawdown because they're strictly going to be hydraulic, I mean, excavation mechanical dredging. So, you know, that may change some of the prioritization too. But, you know, under y'all's direction, we'll spend what you want to do. I want to dredge the.
I would say our general policy should be spend what we can each year and do what we can do, get it accomplished. What is not spent rolls over to the fund and it's used the next year. But we're, you know, as an operational line item, we're now devoting money to that each year, which was not being done. And so I think we'll eventually get ahead just by the fact that we changed the process.
You know, money was being devoted to it. I don't know what, you know, how it got redirected, but I know every year we were taking, I think it was 100 out of the dam and 100 out of lake operations or maybe more than that. And it was in the budget every year. Somebody came back and made adjustments that didn't come before council, then I guess I hope that never happens again.
And in today's dollars, that's really an adequate amount to begin with. I mean, nowhere near what's needed to get ahead.
Yeah, but it was, I think what he got spent at the time, I agree, wouldn't be there now.
What I'd like to see is by the end of the year, have your recommendations on what areas need to be dredged, prioritized as you know, including the cove owners and no's. Then the Lake Advisory Board goes through and y'all prioritize and bring it to us, a total list, and we budget what we can and make our adjustments for budget during our budget sessions based off the information y'all provide us.
So to muddy this up a little more, am I correct in that our dredging contractor has told us that because of the nature of the contracts that he's been able to secure on a downstream side of the marketing and selling of the washed material, that when and if we, when we reach our practical budget limit and we don't have any more funds to continue, for him to continue dredging, that he would like to continue dredging at his own expense because apparently the contracts are lucrative enough that he can remove the material, sell it and still make a.
It says that in here.
Okay.
He can start that today.
There's no hesitation.
I mean, I, you know, we need to work with him on that. I mean, we need to come up with a way that it's a win-win, you know?
Sure, so he just ran out of money tonight.
Well, I was going to say, anyway. Now, he's still kind of basing that off of the, you know, the average of 30,000 cubic yards a year being paid for and then going over that.
Yeah, and that's fine.
You know.
But I would say before we squeeze a whole lot of more money out of our budget, if he is willing and able to do that and still make a profit, it's a win for him, it's a win for us.
We give him this base amount, what he needs and.
Right. And some places where he's dredging will be more profitable to him than others because some is heavy with sand and some of it's heavy with silt.
The rivers is most profitable.
And that's why he's still looking at that base, you know, to be able to survive. And then, you know, and then it's win-win for us if he's still dredging. At the end of the day, when we're done, then.
This is probably, this is probably the best contractor we've ever had. It's probably the best scenario we've ever had, at least since I've been here, and I think it probably goes well beyond that. We'll probably be able to get more done with this contract and under this current program than we've been able to do in the last 20, 25 years.
At least.
Lesson learned. We need to periodically inspect the trucks going out, make sure they're full. That's from the last contractor. I know the individual involved here is a much better individual and probably a lot more honest.
Yes. He's proved time and time again that he's out to fix.
I feel more comfortable with this contractor.
And I do, I do check on him every day and spot check stuff that he's going, that he's got going on and everything. And, you know, he just can't get it out fast enough, he said.
Is his, is his payment being measured by the truckload or by a bathymetric survey of the area he's activated?
We're doing both right now. He's doing bathymetric and we're still monitoring trucks and stuff to come up with a good average of what he's got out. His first stint of dredging, he paid a couple thousand dollars to have it surveyed. He dredged about 5,000 cubic yards out and a storm came and you couldn't see where he even been in the river. So then we did a measurement off of what was in the spoil spit because they have been topo'd. So we did a measurement off of material for that to come up with his average cubic yard.
So.
Well, that, that fill back in, you did what it was supposed to do because if it weren't there, it would be out.
Exactly. Exactly right. So that makes us get a little more creative with the measurements of what he's taken out. And all these measurements, numbers and stuff, I'll run through Harlow to make sure those numbers are correct before we. And Tim's not even put in the first pay request yet. He's not been paid for mobilization. He's not been paid for a dime. He's not turned in a request yet.
This is one of these, this is one of these riddles or one of the tough things about working for this town, operating this town, is that, like, I'm telling you, this is the first time we've really got our hands on something that we really can do something good with. This dredging, this is huge for us. And while we can make it work, let's make it work as hard and as fast as we can, because what you don't pull out stays in there.
Right.
And I'm more than happy with your guidance on where you want this dredging done. You know, tell me where you want it done, and I'll get it done.
Plus, you and the Lake Advisory Board, we know the marina and the river, river's number one, because it's a catch basin. And then the mouth of the river going into marina seems to be second. And then the marina and then out from there, so.
A big thing needs to be the trout deal. We need to get that, we need to get that studied.
I have got that already started.
And if we can eliminate that, we can really get some things done.
I've got, I've already got that underway. I've already been sending out emails and I've already been making phone calls and I've got that underway.
Let me ask you a question in regards to that. That may not be the place, I don't know, but, well, I think it is. Do we, do we need outside source to help us address that issue?
I don't think so at this point. Give me, give me a few more.
I'm not saying you don't know what you're doing, but I'm saying, do we need a technical person that, you know, that can help us bring about a science, that can, that can bring a science to this, that we can address that to get that eliminated?
Right now, I don't think so. I've done some reading, I've found some stuff that I've never seen before, that is saying that the North Carolina wildlife is the one that puts that in place. Well, I've talked to Dan Vogel, which is the sergeant over several counties for this, and I've sat down and talked with him about it, and he goes, that ain't us. And I said, well, you know, in this document here, it says it is y'all. And he goes, well, that's y'all's document. And I said, he said, I'll tell you what I'll do. He says, I'll go to the, I'll go to their biologist, and he says, I'll find out what this is. Because even his opinion, being a wildlife officer here, he says trout don't start till the bridge. And I said, well, that's been our complaint the whole time. So I've got Dan working on it, and if that's the case, we're not going to need outside help. I think we can navigate through it. But if it ends up being that there's another state agency and we all know how they all stick their neck out, say, oh, no, that's my territory. Same thing we did with the mining permit. We start finding everybody that's got a hand in it. If we can find out that the North Carolina wildlife is the only one with it, I think we can handle this.
Well, Dean, just know that if, if you do get to the point where you need some, we need an out-of-town expert, somebody with a briefcase and from out of town, then that we can, we will certainly, yeah, we'll support.
Give them ammunition to fight the battle.
I'll, I'll bring it back to you guys if, if I don't get something here in the next few weeks from them, I'll bring it back to you and say, hey, we need some help.
Thank you. And, and in my research, a month or two back on the Marine Commission and the establishment and all of that, a major justification for the Marine Commission is that we have certain authorities acting as a Marine Commission that even as a town council, we couldn't enforce. An example, jurisdiction over certain waters, waters right across here that's in Chimney Rock, we couldn't enforce Lake Little Regs on that water as a council, but we can as the Marine Commission, even though it's in their jurisdiction. So, could, whatever regulation is out there, as the Marine Commission, could we establish the policy that, that.
No trout.
That is the prevailing policy. See, and maybe William needs to delve into that and answer that for us, I don't know.
And see, this could also in turn go back into the trout buffer around the entire lake. So I'm working on these things, it's, you know, give me a little time and see what I can come up with, and then if I need it, I'll get with William, I'll get with whoever I need to.
If y'all have time you need, send us an email tomorrow. I guess tonight you're looking for us to adopt this dredging policy, but in paragraph four of the proposed plan on the money, which we've already discussed, needs to be changed accordingly, so.
And if there's something else that, you know, if you want me to do a, a survey of these people that are on the list, and you've got the extra money now and you want to do something this year, I can do, I can bring, I can bring some stuff back to you. It'll probably be January, which is still well within time. I can bring that list to you and say, where do you want us to dredge?
Well, I'm fine with, again, spend the four hundred thousand we've allocated, you had a bid of four hundred and thirty-two, you've got a hundred and forty-seven in reserve, you needed thirty-two to meet the bid, if he gets that far along. That leaves you a hundred and fifteen. Let's use it, give it.
Let's use it, leave enough to keep the count open.
But, but we can't pull him off to do that until he accomplishes the whole town objective as well, so.
Correct.
But, sure.
And what you were describing, I got from you, for these seven requests that you have, organizations, I was envisioning you'd have like a project sheet for each one, a little map that shows the area that they want dredged, and then your little bathymetric survey, and then the estimates on what, what's going to be removed, and then how much that would, and how it would be done, right? Just a one sheet for each one?
Yes.
And I think then we can.
Dean, is there any chance with this long-reach bucket that Tim's got, that he could do some of those areas without dropping the lake?
Good question.
What happened with the barge?
It's still coming, but the barge has got a small excavator on it. It's not going to be able to move a whole lot, but I mean, it'll still get into some of these tight areas and move. It'll still belly out.
It, it might be, the barge's main benefit may be for individual property owners who need dredging done around their boathouse or whatever, to contract with them individually.
Right. The part of dredging, excavation-style dredging with the lake up, is this stuff needs to de-water, you know, and it's very messy, it puts a lot of turbidity into the water, you're, you know, you're scooping sediment up and water's washing over it, so it's really nasty, it's really messy. It's a whole lot better to do it with the lake down, where you can kind of pull the sediment off to the side and let it de-water and then get it out.
Well, maybe we can be, have our plans together, be set up, and when we do drop again to do those, we get it done. And he'll be our guy, if he's still responding, which that's the only reason why he won't, to get that done, we won't run into what we've run into in the past.
My biggest problem with dropping the lake has been the loss of generating revenues. I think we should look at the, look at the intake structure and what the lower level of.
Generally, when we're mayor, we only go down four to five feet, and usually the small generator wants it up and running.
Can work with that, well, it's, yeah, I mean, if that's the case, I wouldn't, I don't.
Because on the lake drawdown, where you average four to five feet down?
Just as long as we don't have to shut that down.
Not long ago, just last year, we were talking not lowering it every three years, but possibly every five years, and that was something the L A B was going to discuss at the time. And I don't know that there was ever a recommendation made.
No, we talked about it and discussed it.
As part of your dredging strategy, or more maybe dredging policy, we, we dealt with this before, where we're dealing in these coves, dredging like Firefly, Gray Logs or whatever, no closer than ten feet to a structure.
Correct.
Regardless of the type of structure, no closer than ten feet to a structure. Because you, you could undermine, when that water comes back up, you can undermine, so.
Correct.
Okay. Do you have what, what you needed from us?
Yeah.
You need a motion to adopt the dredging, the dredging strategy for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, as amended through discussion.
Yes.
Want to move that, so moved?
I did.
All right. Second by Commissioner Cameron, any discussion? Being done, then all those in favor say aye. Pull the same sign. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, sir.
Good job, Dean.
Good. Okay, that brings us to item D, which is the new recreation position discussion.
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Well, what I would like to do is just have a discussion with the board about the possibility of bringing a Parks and Rec assistant in that would serve directly under the Lake Operations Director. And this person would be an assistant to Dean. He would learn about the lake, or she would learn about the lake, all things about the lake. They would serve as staff to our Parks and Recreation Board, and they would address recreation-related issues with that board. The person would be brought in at a salary which is going to be much less than what was proposed, say, it's about sixteen thousand dollars a year salary benefits. Salary would be something on the level of our current zoning infrastructure. And then as Dean begins to think about retirement, it basically serves as a succession plan. This person has a Parks and Rec background, is working in Parks and Rec, is mentored by Dean over the next five to six years, they learn all things about the lake. And then as they, as Dean retires, this person can assume both director of the lake and of the, and over recreation. So that's the plan in general. There's a savings. It gives us time to teach somebody about the lake. It gives Dean the assurance that he can train someone to oversee the lake operations. But also, this person begins to work with the Recreation Department to get their needs met. We have a lot of recreation plans that have not been implemented. It's going to take money to do that. It's going to take somebody spending some time working through these plans. The other part of this is that we've talked about this director being an events coordinator. I'm proposing that we increase the hours for Laura Creji and let her serve as that events coordinator. What I think is, is really an unlikely match is to have a Parks and Rec director who knows everything about recreation, who knows everything about the kind of parks that we're proposing, which are bike trails and, not bike trails, and hyphen trails, who knows everything about a lake and knows how to coordinate events. It's a very unlikely person that you're going to find, and John, frankly, I think it's unrealistic. I do not believe we need to abolish the Lake Operations Department. I think it's a necessary thing that we need to keep in place. If you look at all the projects that Dean has currently that he's overseeing, it's one of the longest lists of projects that any of our directors have as far as projects go. And what he needs is help, an assistant to help him with these projects. He is taking on some recreational-type projects, one being, when we spoke about earlier, which is the Boys Camp Road property, which we're looking to convert to a park slash dredging operation, Mills Recovery Site. When you, when you look at all the things that we're saying this director needs to do, I think it's frankly just unrealistic. But I think if he has an assistant, I think we can phase our town into providing a person who can serve the Parks and Rec Board at a much less salary, and this person is trained on how we do recreation. How this town does recreation is very unique. We have a lot of recreational assets, and sometimes I wonder if, if, if we need to reconsider whether or not we own some of those assets or not. But, but that's where I'm at on this issue, and that's my recommendation to the board.
All right. What's the way in on this?
Well, I'm going to reserve my comments over to the council.
Well, of course, the first thing is, as you mentioned, this Boys Camp Park, we as a council have really only discussed it as being the waste pits and for dredging. I mean, we've heard a little murmur on making a park out of it. Why the necessary, why the necessary park? And it's really for working.
Mr. Cameron, this town applied for a grant, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that park, and this board had to approve that before it went to Partif. So we've got a, we've got a contract in the office waiting for a signature so they can send us a check for basically reimbursing us for fifty percent of the cost that we incurred to purchase that property.
Okay, but I also understand that we were looking at, as part of that, we're going to take the other spoil pits down and work, and that was going to be part of that Partif. Is that still the plan?
It is the plan, and we have found a way to marry the Materials Recovery Site with that park.
Okay, well, that's all I'm asking, is we haven't seen a drawing on it, we haven't seen.
It's coming to you.
Seen anything, so I just, I'm hearing this, but I'm not.
It's coming to you.
What was, was the thing, I saw one, it had, it showed the spoil pit down near the lake, and then it had some cat, cat tides and then something, a rock and something.
And so, so we've reported this to you now about two or three times to this board, and, and I've said succinctly that our goal is to make all the parties happy and keep all the money.
And I've heard you on that, but the information.
It's coming.
Okay, I've, I've heard that too, I'm just saying, I just.
You haven't heard that. I haven't said it's coming. We're telling you it's working through the system, but you're going to get it, and we're going to show you where we're going to make everybody happy, and we're going to keep all the money.
Okay, well, this is just, I'm trying to be updated, because I don't feel I have.
He updates you, it's not.
I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but, you know, that, that land, that property is in, is in Chimney Rock.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And so, a part of the whole, whatever the heck we do out there, we have to go through another jurisdiction, just like any other owner would, to get that done. And Shannon and I, and a couple of us, and Dean, we went up there and met with those folks, and they pretty quickly let us know that they, they were, they were very interested in seeing a park at that location, but they understood that, you know, we needed additional space for our dredging operations, and they wondered whether we couldn't do some form of a mixed-use, a mixed-use development on that property that would satisfy our needs for additional dredge area, as well as their desire to have a park entity created within their jurisdiction. So when he says making everyone happy, what he's saying is, that was one of the major entities that we were, we're trying, you know, to work with cooperatively, or collaboratively, or in a way that doesn't blow up into an inter-jurisdictional.
We have to, Bob.
Issue.
We don't have a choice.
I don't have these ideas hit me this often, too often, but talking about this multi-use, mud wrestling and four-wheelers, it seems to me like that's the, that's.
That's the way we're going to be wearing that picture. Cattle and that's it. But I, I would suggest that he show you the plan, it's.
Let's just be updated.
I think it's kind of, I think it's kind of masterful. You would have surprised me that we could have worked such a thing out, but from what I can see, it looks like.
And that's great, but the last thing I saw was we were sending the surveyors out.
Catch you a little.
That's the last I heard on this project.
Dean, did you report on the project across the river tonight?
He says it's being done and what they're looking at, but I'm saying, we, last information we got right here, drawings, was we're doing the surveying, so please keep that in mind. That's where I'm coming from.
It's, it's, it's coming. It's, it's quick. We've got a meeting with Parks and Rec Board this week, and then after they look at it and give it a final review, we're going to send it to you. So we're just days away for you seeing the plan that where we can keep all of our money, and we can accomplish both, all the recreational things we wanted to do, makes the village happy, and also allows us to expand that dredging pit, so that we can pull material out of this lake like crazy.
If you accomplished that, you would walk quite a tight road, because.
It's coming.
There were, there were so many different factors, as you, as you remember, they, we had the, when we first bought the half of what we got over there, didn't know the others was going to be available, we didn't have room for the pit, and it was all going to be recreation. Then we got the other piece, well, okay, well, now we could, makes more sense to do the pit, and, and it turned out with the grant that we had applied for, it looked like we weren't going to get it. We could get, we'd have one or the other. Wasn't that the deal for a while? We'd have one or the other, and then the last I heard was you, well, we saw the, I saw at some point, I don't remember where I saw it, but a drawing of the, and it had the camp, remember it had the camp, the camp sites, and it had the dredge pit down near the lake. And, and the word, word at that point was that we weren't going to be able to get the park, that we were going to have to forego that, that they weren't going to go along with it. So this is, this is you, this, yeah, this is.
We had a chance to meet with Partif, and we showed them the plan, we basically shown the original plan, the board approved and sent to them for the money, we showed them the new plan. We can, not only can meet the performance objectives of the original plan, but we can basically outperform it. We can have more tent sites, we can have more picnic sites, we can have a lot of our trails.
And they're, and they're going to give us a hundred percent.
This would have just come up recently, because I didn't know that they had.
It was. And so we met with Partif, and one of the stipulations. And so we met with Partif and one of the stipulations was that, uh, the dredge site, when that ceases being a spoils site, that it would be capped and used for a recreation area. But they didn't put a time limit on it. And, and we sent the email to them. They sent it to Raleigh. We brought it back. We got it on the plan. So it's going to the Parks and Rec Board this week for, Dean's got it set up.
The, the point I want to make is, is one, the whole discussion of the Boys Camp property is not what's on the agenda. However, since we've delved into that, what has occurred on the Boys Camp property is a complete different direction from the last council guidance that was approved. And that council guidance that was approved was to send the engineers out and survey and provide recommendations back to us on what was needed regarding the spoils pits. And, and so we can make a decision on the best direction to go on the property. We've now gone off on a different tangent in a different direction and a whole new plan that's been discussed with Chimney Rock and even published in The Breeze that this is what's going to happen without council involvement. Yeah, it's coming to us, but the council already approved one direction to go and that has never been accomplished. That has never come back to us for our recommendations. Now, ever since I've been on council, I have advocated there should never be any surprises to us as council members on our agenda or anything that I do as a commissioner should not be a surprise to any of the others and so on and so forth. This is a complete surprise and it again, on this recreation position, is a complete different direction from what you were charged with doing. You were charged with revising the job description for a Parks and Recreation Director, not this. And I am opposed to this a hundred percent. And, and I've got the minutes here from our budget meeting where all of the commissioners supported the position of the Parks and Recreation Director with a revised job description and the funds allocated to fill it starting January 1. And that's what I expect to see to happen. As far as the organization that occurred back in March, there was never an intent to abolish the Lake Operations Department. It is a recre- the lake is our biggest recreation asset. And it should rightfully be under the Parks and Recreation Department, which was established and organized in March. And, and I don't think we should go away from that at this point in time. A long-term future, the long-term future is this town needs a park or a recreation department and it needs a director to hit it, not the opera, not the opposite. We're Parks and Recreation is under Lake Operations. We can, that doesn't make sense. Excuse me, sir. First of all, this is a commissioner discussion and a council discussion and a debate. Whenever we need your advice, I'll ask you.
Hold on, hold on. Look, I've got, either I'm misunderstanding or we were at different meetings because I remember when we first looked at that property, we talked about it being a park the whole time.
Yes.
That was a whole, that was a whole thing. Nothing, nothing came up. Y'all stop me now if I, if I say something that's not everybody's recreation. Recollection, all right? Then the other piece became available, all right? Now we can do a spoils pit. And the big question, I remember talking about it when we were talking about, uh, in a closed session about whether or not we were going to buy it. It was, well, are we going to be able to, if we use this for a spoils pit, are we still going to be able to get the money from Parks? Everybody agreed that we, that would be good. We wanted to get this, but we wanted to get that money from Parks if we could. We had, also had a grant for, uh, spoils pits or for something along that that was we were going to be using for spoils pits, right? And we were afraid that if we got one, the other one would go away. Which one was more? Which one was, you know, is there a way we can, is there? I remember at one time we said, well, can we see if we're doing away with these over here on this side of the river? Can we use it for there? No, we can't. We didn't think we could do that. And so there was a negotiation going on there with the two grant writers. And at, um, I was under the impression until tonight that we weren't going to be able to get both of them. So apparently, and I remember talking about it not maybe two or three weeks ago. So apparently that's something that you've heard recently. Am I right about that?
Yes.
All right. So the fact that we've got, uh, that we're considering a park and, uh, and spoils pit, oh, there's nothing new to any of us. And we knew early on that we had to get approval from Chimney Rock.
True.
And I don't remember if it was in this meeting or, uh, one of the other, one of the board meetings, it was discussed, well, somebody needs to be up there bringing them up to speed on what we're looking at and so that they don't get wind of this and think that we're getting out in front of them too much.
Exactly.
And I think it was, I don't, and again, I don't, I don't remember where it came from, but I think it was the, somebody said the mayor and, uh, maybe the mayor and, and Shannon and somebody else should go up and kind of, you know, bring everybody up to speed and see if we could come to a consensus on this. So I don't, I'm not, no. So I'm, I'm saying that none of that is news to anybody.
Sure.
The rest of it is if we're changing around the departments and who reports to who and that sort of thing, that's what we rely on the town manager to bring us recommendations for.
Sure.
And that's what I see being done tonight. I think that, uh, uh, the fact that you're bringing, Shannon is bringing us recommendations on how his op, the, the operation that he's in charge of relates to each other to get something accomplished is perfectly within order. I have never been sold on the idea of having a standalone, uh, Parks and Recreation Director. When we talked about it, I didn't think it was necessary at the time and I think it was kind of a compromise. We said, well, we'll wait. What we'll do is we'll put it in the budget, but we won't implement it initially. We'll look at implementing it, um, after December, into January. So that was, that wasn't a unanimous decision by everyone. And I think if, if, uh, if Shannon has got a program that he's put together, I'm perfectly willing to sit here and listen to what his recommendations are and weigh them against whatever recommendations everybody else has and make a decision. I don't think, you know, I don't think anything on affairs or, uh, underhand has been going on here. I think, uh, uh, Shannon has been doing what the town manager's charged with doing. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I wanted to add to you, uh, if you recall on the funding, uh, where we were talking about the possibility of not having the Partif funding if we did the dredging. The alternative was that we could get the Partif funding for the redevelopment over here, if you recall that motion of it.
That was, so if we lost, if we lost the Partif funding there because we didn't do a park, then we can get it for the redevelopment on this side. We could ask for it. The problem was, obviously, we weren't buying anything on this side of the river.
Right.
And that was what.
It'd be redevelopment, not purchase.
That's right.
It wouldn't necessarily be 50/50 or like it is now.
The grant that we have is an acquisition grant. And so we're going to get funds because we bought property. That's what the contract is for.
All right, so, uh, we've had a lot of discussion on my right side. Is, is there any?
I've already spoken. I've said basically, I just need to be kept up to date. I just wasn't informed.
Okay.
And last thing I heard is we're surveying the property and we're going to come back to us. And that's the last I heard. That's where I stopped.
Okay.
And that's, that's.
I understand that. I, I would, I would say, I would say that there.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm not saying I don't support the project. All I'm saying is.
Well, we're not, we're not here tonight asking for the, uh, for the council to make a decision to approve or not approve. And I think what Shannon's doing is just simply giving us an update on where things are, things that you haven't seen yet, but will. So, um.
So.
Oh, yeah.
One of the things, one of, one of the things that, uh, that I'm trying to show is that Dean is, is, is basically has a ton of projects for the lake. But he also has projects related to recreation and they're, and they're intimately involved. And I think what Dean needs is someone that can support him in that effort, but also play a key role to the Parks and Rec Board. Because they've never had someone with a background in Parks and Rec that can help them, assist them with Parks and Rec. And that's exactly what I'm proposing. Somebody with a degree, maybe fresh out of school, um, that we could hire at a much cheaper rate than a director. We could let communication specialists handle the events. Uh, this person could assist Dean, would be a key person to the Parks and Rec Board. This person gets trained over a number of years, becomes an expert in the lake while they're helping with Parks and Rec and it saves us money. It gets done what we need to get done.
He is, and I, he is asking for approval. I, I meant on the park plan, the approval. But he is asking for, for approval on this and we're not compelled to necessarily do that. There's more discussion and more, uh.
I, I want to, uh, try to remind the, my fellow commissioners and mayor why we, we did the reorganization that we did and, and moved Lake Operations under Parks and Recreation. And, and that information, that was discussed during closed session, but I want to try to jog your memory on that. There was a good reason for that.
Does that mean there's more discussion and we need to have a closed session?
Yes, I believe so.
Before we make a decision on this?
I wasn't, I wasn't part of that discussion.
I know that.
Yeah. I believe that could be part of our closed session tonight.
Well, I have to say, I think some of these issues go back to before. I went up to our town manager and, uh, issues from, from then. And, uh, you know, I think, I think we're in a different ballgame now than we were, we were in then. And, uh, so I have to say, sometimes I, I don't disagree with you, Bob. I'm not, I, I feel, I feel like I've gotten lost a little bit sometimes. But I'm not here every day. You know, I'm not here every day. I've, I've got, I've got a job and, and I don't get by here very often. And, uh, so I have to, you know, uh, put, put my confidence in, in the staff and in the mayor and, uh, and hopefully, you know, be informed and brought up to date. And I think that's what we're doing here tonight. I'll tell you this, I said this to Shannon, I said this to the mayor in the last three or four weeks. There's so much stuff going on. I'm not sure once in a month for us to sit down and talk about this stuff's enough.
I agree with you.
I, I, I think we need maybe on the second week, uh, you know, in the week, two weeks in between, we have an infer, some kind of informational meeting or workshop or something. Because I, I, and it's not their fault I feel lost. They're, they're, they're busting their rears butts, you know, getting this stuff done and making plans. And, and I do feel like I've gotten lost a little bit.
But here's where I'm at, is, is you my decision tonight on making a major decision that we have just been informed with, the package just come out. And it's not, whatever you want to use a word, just give somebody two or three days to make a decision that affects this whole town is not proper. It needs to have been discussed two and three weeks ago and, and let us sleep on it or think about it, but to get it in a packet that I picked up on Monday when I came back in from overseas and I'm supposed to make these major decisions. I just feel like there should have been more notification sent by email or, or, or packaged this up earlier and say, please consider this. We want to discuss it or, or something. But I just feel like we're letting enough notice or discussion on this ahead of time. We can do some of it closed session tonight. But I feel you just don't make a decision that quick overnight.
Well, let me, let me, may I add something?
I was just going to say that I think that, uh, a lot of things we have coming here, you know, as long as we've been on here, we've always put things off if we weren't, weren't ready for it. And I was, I didn't, I, I didn't look at it that way when I saw it. I looked at it as more of a recommendation. If you guys can, uh, make a decision on it, do it tonight. Here's your motion. Uh, I don't, I didn't, I didn't feel any pressure to make a decision tonight.
Well, it was asked for on the form tonight, so.
Yeah, I know.
You're asking for that tonight formally. And I'm just saying, I haven't had enough time to, it's not that I disagree or, or agree. It's, give me some time to, to kick all four sides around the corner.
Well, I, I fully expected a, a full discussion about the issue. Uh, and, and that is what we're having. You know, we all know and are aware that money was put in that budget for a recreation director. And I frankly, I, I don't think that we need one. I don't think we're ready for that yet. I do think this is, uh, a, a plan that is, um, allows for us to transition in that direction and over time, I think we can get there. But I didn't want to come back to you in January when the money is appropriated and say, well, I've got a different thought and idea about the director. That's why I'm bringing this to you now for this kind of discussion. You are getting it two or three weeks in advance of January because that's when the money's appropriated for us to make a hire. And so now's the time for us to talk about this, not in January.
Well, it's not about talking, but don't, don't ask a full decision tonight.
To feel here. And you've got my recommendation as your manager that we not hire a recreation director, that we hire someone in recreation with a recreation background that can help Lake Operations, but also serve as that key person for, uh, for your Parks and Rec Board.
Well, I asked you to give this discussion, but don't ask me to make a decision here, which is what's being asked.
Well, Commissioner Cameron, I would say that in Michelle and I filling out these forms, uh, we were trying to get this thing done and maybe this is something that was put on there, that maybe it should have been more about discussion. And that was intended to be a full discussion.
We got one, we got a little more to go, so.
But I'll, I'll, I'll take it. I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to pass on, Michelle, I'm just trying to say, that's what's on there. And if you don't want to approve it, you don't have to.
Yeah, I just want to.
It's that easy.
Table it for a short time.
There's nothing nefarious, there's nothing other than.
I think your idea of, uh, you know, I think the whole subject of our park and recreational assets, and I don't think it's just, I don't think it's just a park and recreational, uh, director that we're short here. I think, uh, from a, from a resource standpoint, uh, there's coming a time when, uh, this big park gets turned over to us. I don't think we, we have nearly, uh, the resources to handle, uh, an asset like that properly. And I think before we go steaming down the road on, on where we are, I would like to see us have a wider discussion about, about all that, about, um, having large recreational assets like that that are not or cannot be monetized, where there is no income stream associated with the cost to own and operate and maintain something like that for the benefits of citizens, uh, many of which are not our residents, are people visiting our area. I think there's an expanded discussion that we should have as a town, as a council, about that whole subject, um, before we just assume that's the way it's going to be and we assume we're going to tool up to, to deal with that.
No problem.
And I think Parks and Rec, uh, we should have them come here and be a part of the workshop, uh, just to get their benefit of, of the vision that they have of, of where the town should be as it relates to assets like that.
We've already had Jim Walters input that they're wore out.
Well, I, and I know that and, and that's a fact and we need to address that. But, and how we, how we address that is, is where I'm going.
I agree. That's what I'm saying. We need time for this discussion before we make this decision.
Well, is this something, it rises to a level now of, of us maybe doing the workshop on it? Is scheduling, is just a focus discussion about this and coming to the bottom line?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll tell you this, is that when you hire a director, you go pull a Parks and Rec Director from a neighboring town or neighboring county who has a staff of five, 10, or 15, or 20 to come in and manage this town and their director, the first thing they're going to be asking you for is additional human resources to help them get things done. What we need is, is, is an Indian and not a chief. We need somebody that can get out here and help with recreation rather than set up a brand new apartment to manage a 1,500 acre high control out through the mountainside and a, and a, and a mountain bike park that we really struggled to maintain because of the way it was built. If we go down that road, you're talking about a lot of expense in maintaining assets that a majority of the folks who live in Lake Luer don't even use. We're managing those assets for tourists. And in about three years, when Concerned Carolina basically stops funding maintenance of these trails and the invasive species, we're going to be picking up the bill for that. And that's a lot of area for us to maintain. We need a rec department, something that's akin to the state park, not a town 1,200 for an asset like that. That's a major step. And you hire a director, that's exactly. And you hire a director, that's exactly where we're going to go, I believe.
And looking down the road, long-term future, that's what this town needs. And you start building it, yes. Now, and it's not just managing Weed Patch Mountain and Buffalo Creek. Remember, you've got Morse Park Gardens, Morse Park Common, you've got Dipmawatch, Pool Creek Picnic Park, the Flowering Bridge, the golf course in Lourmont, and the lake, which are all recreational assets, park and recreational assets that would be under this department, so.
What, we don't need to get into the--
I just make sure that we set up a special meeting.
Workshop for park and recreational assets and our ability to manage--
You know, I'd like to see a composite list of just what Stephen just said. Tell me all the, tell me all the, you know, I don't know how many acres we've got and all these different things, I'd love to see that before I start, you know.
Bring that to the point, that's a meeting, yeah.
The big part of discussion is something that's really kind of unknown now, and I don't know how we would, I hope there's a way we can get an estimate on what it would actually cost us to maintain these other parks when they come, become part of our responsibility.
Well, they're already here, except for the Lourmont Trail. That's the only one that's not built. Weed Patch, yes, Conservant Carolina is contributing to the management of that for a couple of more years, but yeah, that one, and we've talked about that before, too.
And when it's initially built, you don't have as much maintenance right out of the box as you do down the road when the trails start deteriorating and so forth. So there's some long-term planning that frankly, I wish we, there was a way we didn't have to pay for that.
Well, I think, you know, I think we've been adding recreational assets, and what we haven't been doing is we haven't been considering long-term cost. And they're exciting to have, and they're great to have, but they've got to be under, I think, the arm and umbrella of the right public agency that can operate them. And in my mind, that trail to Weed Patch Mountain would be a great additional asset to state in North Carolina.
I think they're two different animals. I don't think you could compare the lake and the recreation and stuff from the lake to those, to the, to those thousands of acres. I don't think the same person is even, you're not going to find a person. There's no way you're going to find a person that is capable of being effective on both of those at the same time.
It's hard to find somebody who's effective just on the lake.
Yeah.
So again, there was no intent to abolish that. That was never discussed in the reorganization to abolish Lake Operations or do away with the position. That was never discussed. And I don't know where that's coming from. Maybe misunderstanding or miscommunication or something, but that was never the intent.
Was that department going to fold up then, under Parks and--
It would be a department under Parks and Recreation Department, which is the organization that we approved, was the Lake Operations would be under the Parks and Recreation Department.
Well, I still think, personally, I still think subordinating the lake to someone who sees it as a recreational amenity only, you're gonna, you're gonna have somebody who's willing to take it on, manage it from their recreational perspective, but they're going to miss the utility and the function of that lake that's separate apart from recreation. And that's a lot of the things that Dean's working on, and I think, I think we, it wouldn't be good for this town to basically say, we're going to manage it totally as a recreational asset.
That's what was driving the direction to revise the description. And from what I understood, from all the discussion, what was part of that, the guy, the person hired would be responsible for overseeing the Lake Operations Department with the people there, and yes, they're going to run that Lake Operations, but they're going to be answerable to the Parks and Recreation Department. That doesn't mean that the director has only a recreational background and has no knowledge of Lake Operations. He might come in without that, and he goes to the Lake Manager School, just like Dean did. Dean started that job, he had no knowledge of what to do. He went into it, he went to school, he went to training, and he learned about it. And over time, he's learned more. And yes, we draw upon that experience. Again, there was never any attempt to do away with that department.
We're not going to iron it all out tonight, you know. I think the thing to do is to have a workshop with Parks and Recreation and see if, get us a big table out here, sit around the table, and see if we can iron out the best course for this thing.
What's our timing? What do we, before the next town council meeting?
Well, I think you've got, we might need to put off hiring, the hiring the person until January. If we can't get all this in till the end of the year, we just put off the hire date. You know, we've worked through this and work it out before we make the hire.
Well, the hire was already after January 1. Already, that was set.
Right, but the money starts flowing after January 1, which as a responsible manager, I want to have that person in the saddle January 1. But I don't think we're going to get there. It looks like we need to work this out.
Well, I think if we could have our workshop between now and the December town council meeting, we'll be able to maybe come up with some framework, policy, that we can then agenda, put this maybe back on an agenda for some definitive decision in December.
Well, unless there's something we need to talk about offline, I, as your manager, want a lake, a direct report from the guy who's running the lake. Unless you want to share something with me, separate apart from this discussion about why we shouldn't do that, I'd like to have a direct report from that director to the manager. To bury that operation under another layer, especially someone who knows nothing about a lake, I don't think is the best for this town.
I'll hash it out at our--
All right.
You good with that?
Yeah.
Let's, after this, we'll get together on our calendars and figure out what's a good timing for everybody, and we'll--
If you don't fire me first.
Set up, I don't see the need for that.
Now, we still, we already have a special meeting with Parks and Rec Thursday, pretty full agenda.
Yeah. But maybe you could just bring this up and tell them that we want to have this workshop, and we can get their thoughts on who needs to go.
The board would be, try to come to that meeting if you can, if you have time.
What time is that meeting?
Thursday, 1:30.
I'm out of town, sorry.
But I think that would be an informative meeting about all the work that's been done on that project across the route, where we're headed.
Okay, I think I could be there, Thursday, 1:00.
And I will say this, to, just as a comment to that, you know, I've heard a lot of questions about the sewer and the utility. I came to the utility board meeting last week, best thing I did, just sat here for three and a half hours and hear all the discussion that went on there, so I, you know, I'm going to try to get as many of those as I can, just for informational purposes.
All right. Okay, then, let's move on to the next item, which is one of the two new items we added to new business, that being the communications specialist position that was on the consent agenda, and we've lifted it now, so I think maybe Shannon, if you would give us a little background on this.
Sure. Well, when the town basically, well, let me back up. The town had an agreement with Ryder Works, which is a company that is owned by Dari Hoffman. And for a number of years, the town basically was built by Ryder Works for the work that they did, and we paid the invoice. I never found a contract in the records regarding that relationship. The town chose to, Mr. Nally chose to turn this into a town position, and he solicited resumes. And so the staff conducted the interviews, reviewed the resumes, conducted the interviews, and then based on those rankings, I came in, I reviewed those, and I made a hire. And so at the time, the town had budgeted, it was 19 hours a week for the position. And so in the, apparently in the discussions with the person that's hired, which was Laura Creji and Anita Taylor, there was a promise of access to life insurance, health insurance to the town. And we come to find out that that's not the case. At 19 hours, you don't have access to life insurance. That's right. So upon further review of everything that we've got to do and the direction I feel like we need to go, based on a lot of other discussions had about town operations, about our needs, internal communication as well as external communication, and also the need to have someone who can work on events, what I'm proposing is that we bump the hours of the communications specialist up to 32, and then benefits would follow with that move. So that all the things are outlined in your packets, those are discussions that Ms. Creji and I've had over a number of weeks, and she has pulled those items together and those are now in the packets.
What are the hours now? How many hours?
19.
19.
We did go over the emergency sessions.
13 hours, we'd be going up, right?
Is it 18 hours or 19 hours?
19.
You go up 13 hours.
And so what I'm proposing, it goes 32, and then we have the benefits. So the budget amendment basically allows us to do that.
Was the, the promise for benefits been hired for the part-time in writing?
No.
That was verbal?
From, it's my understanding, yes, it was.
If you recall, a year and a half ago, during the budget, whenever we discussed changing this position from a contractual to a part-time position, I stated that I see a point in the future where this town would need a full-time public information officer or communications specialist, whatever you want to call it. And I could see that coming. So I believe at that point in time that the changing from a contract, which we knew the contract with Valerie had never been renewed and updated, there was one at one point in time, but it had lapsed and had never gotten updated, and as time went on, and then she was working day-to-day basically without a contract. And we knew that. And that actually occurred whenever Chris was here. So, but, and I still see a point in time to where a full-time public information person or communications specialist, we're now calling her, is just going to be needed. And I don't know that now's the right time. I do want to ask the question, what is the cost? When we add the benefits and the additional hours, what are we talking in total cost? Over what we're paying now, what are we talking in total cost?
It was additional--
And where's the money coming from?
It's specified in the budget amendment, and it was an additional--
Okay, the budget amendment gives me a bunch of account numbers, and I have no idea what they are, looking at this. So I guess--
Okay, Sam?
It doesn't really tell me where it's coming from.
Yeah, if you could just state what those accounts are.
And it doesn't tell me the total cost either. What it tells me is you're adding this much and amending and increasing and decreasing from these accounts to keep a balance, but that still doesn't tell me the total cost of her position at 32 hours with benefits.
I apologize, Mr. Wilson.
Sam, can you go to the microphone for us?
I need a calculator, but it would be those on the second table.
That's line item 102, 585, and 130?
What page, John?
Page 40.
Yeah.
All of those numbers are just--
I don't know what page 40 is, but on the budget amendment, 235--
That's our page 40.
Wouldn't it just be the total of all that? Sam, it's not the total of all that, is the adjustment?
If you add up the total--
Of all those lines, it should be what the adjustment is, right?
Right.
Yeah, so just add up those numbers.
37.2 on the top, and 53.99 on the bottom. It'd be looking like 42, 42.599.
Here's a calculator.
42.599.
This one, this one, that must be from that environment.
37.350?
Development.
37.350.
That's the upper side.
Right. And on the lower, the decrease--
Valerie was under economic--
If you add up that line--
So that line, that must be--
That should add up the same thing, I'll bet you.
It'd be 53.99.
Oh, 53.99.
amended budgets, what I'm working off of.
So roughly, all costs benefits would be about 74,000, 74,500, 74,700.
Additional?
That's the total.
For a year, for a year out.
For 32 hours.
That's total.
For 32 hours a week for a year, 70-something thousand.
Something's not right there.
That can't be right.
No. The first table, section 1--
Do you need a--
A few minutes to check or something?
Yeah. Sam, isn't, in this budget amendment that I'm looking at, this table here, the amount of the increase, this is the amount of increase over what the budget already is right now for the 19 hours, right?
That's correct.
If you add up that column, the total is 37.350. And what you're doing then below is you're taking it, you're getting those funds to put in those accounts from these other funds, other accounts below, and that adds up to 37.350. So the adjustment up is 37.350. And I would just guess that line 100 is salaries, right? Line 110 is some, and 11 and 120 are the benefits, the different types of benefits, vacation, sick leave, whatever. So the basic salary change for the hours is 28,500, and the rest of it in benefits is 37, is the difference with 37.350.
37,000, whatever increase.
Will be insurance, will be taxes, and will be--
The additional 13 hours a week.
Seems that way.
Which is throwing benefits into the picture, which is not there for the current 19 hours.
Correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And the accounts that you're taking it out of here, this 102, 102, 585, 130, what are those accounts? Where is that money coming from?
The first 102, 492 is the part-time salary for the communications director.
Okay.
That's what the salary is now?
Yes, yes.
So you've got to back that back out somewhere.
Well--
He's decreasing it.
Yeah, we're decreasing that, we're moving--
Moving it up into 100.
100.
Right.
We're taking it out of part-time, moving it into 100. The other 5,000 is a part-time in the community development department that we had budgeted.
So there was a position there that we're not using, and we're moving those funds to cover this, right?
That's right.
Okay, and then what was the 1894?
The 1894 is, the 585 is the branding line item that we had budgeted for the communications director. They have a--
Branding?
That's under economic development portion of the budget.
Branding, okay, okay.
That's a branding--
And then the six grand?
And then the six grand is actually unemployment insurance-- And then the 6,000 is actually unemployment insurance that changed the, the state has changed the way we report from a reimbursable employer, I'm trying, trying to be basic.
Yeah, right.
We had budgeted 7,000 originally. It looks like we'll only get hit one quarter, so $1,000 would, would cover that unemployment payment. So we have a balance of $6,000 we can take out of that account.
Okay.
So we're, we're really moving money around the budget. We're kind of paying...
So you would still have $1,000 left in that line item?
Right.
And then you'd still have 43, almost 4,400 left in the other line, which is the branding item.
Right. And we're zeroing down the part-time.
Yeah. So basically, you found a way to cover this additional labor cost and benefits with areas in other part of the budget where you don't anticipate we're going to need those funds.
Correct.
Or where we won't use those funds.
Right.
Okay.
So we're really not increasing anything.
Not, no, not asking for more money, we're just moving money around to accomplish that.
Which, which is what it always is, I mean.
We're not hurting, we're not hurting anything else by doing that.
Right.
And we're gaining...
Not taking any money from the fund balance.
And we're gaining the expertise of the communications director, working 32 hours.
Well, I will make a comment about, about this. Not about the, now I understand the numbers. And, and so I'm looking at, okay, so we're going to increase, we're going to move money in our budget to cover this expense, 37,000. So what, what do we, what do we do that for? What are we getting for that? You know, I mean, in a sense. Well, we're getting a great employee, in my opinion, and we're making good on a promise that we made to a great employee in the, in that number. But in addition to that, and what really, what really makes this worthwhile to me is, I've read through the summary that Laura put together on the, on the things that she could, in addition to what this job description might indicate, in a communications specialist role, she could bring these other things to the table in the additional time that we're now, if we decide to do this, allocating. And I will tell you, I can't find one thing on this list that I don't think is worthwhile. And I'm not saying we have to have every one of these things, but what I'm saying is that if we're investing some additional money in someone's salary, and we can peg it to any, any number of these things, I'm, I'm good with that. That's my opinion.
Well, I'll weigh in on that a little bit, myself, being someone that's been in the business of hiring, training people for the past 45 years. The time that I've spent with different conversations and stuff with Laura, I think she brings professionalism, wealth of professionalism from her background and experience, that will be something that we will way more benefit from than worrying about the expense. And now we're seeing that the expense really is already there, we're just moving it around. I look at the things that we are going to be facing with the sewer system, and the information that we are going to have to keep out to our citizens, and all the things from that standpoint, that I just think her abilities will be a real benefit to the town and to us as commissioners in helping get that out there. So that's, that's my comments about that.
I'll be glad to weigh in. Laurie, you did a great job on this package, all the description and all. And I have to agree with the professionalism, I've been impressed. So, in my review, and what I see, and I understand the need for benefits, we're all there, and we all need those. But I feel like the town would, would greatly benefit from extending downers for, and this list is very thorough. And like you say, we need them all, and, you know, maybe it's a little earlier in time than what we planned.
Don't you think it's impressive that a person with the limited tenure that she's had came up with this list?
Yeah.
I would challenge any of us that, who are involved in, to come up with a list like this. I mean, it just, it speaks well.
It does, it speaks well and shows professionalism.
I had, I had a lengthy discussion with Laura regarding the Veterans Day resolution and other, other things. And I was very impressed. And, like I said, I've, I've seen, a year and a half ago, I said, "That's going to happen. We're, we're going to need that at some point in time." Yeah, this is sooner than what I figured and was looking at. But, but I see it as a need, just like the Parks and Rec director position. And therefore, I recommend we approve changing the communications specialist. I make a motion that we change the communications specialist position from part-time to full-time, at, at I guess 32 hours a week. It probably could go to more at some point. And we approve budget amendment 235.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? If there isn't, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the final item of new business. Commissioner Weber, you suggest that the appointment to the Parks and Rec Board be made tonight?
Yes, sir. As we know, Diane Barrett had to resign, and her tenure ends December 31st, 2019. Maureen Bay is currently the alternate on that board and is present, and has expressed, has expressed an interest to go into a regular position on that board. There are no other applicants on file. And so I make a motion that we appoint Maureen Bay, oh, and the Parks and Recreation Board recommended unanimously that she fill it. I make a motion that we appoint Maureen Bay to fill Diane Barrett's remaining term through December 31st, 2019, as a regular member of the Parks and Recreation Board. That will then open up the alternate position for next month if we can get applications prior to our normal appointments.
And second by Commissioner Moore, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd say Diane stood here for four hours, just waiting to get that recognition. She deserves it by default.
Don't ask her, she still wants it.
She got extra two.
Not, not enough a single time that I've seen.
Bill had a proclamation for Bill at the next meeting there.
There's an alternate position on the Parks and Rec Board, Bill.
Yeah, Bill.
All right.
We got to vote.
Good. We look forward to having you, but we have to vote first. So all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mo.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the...
Good night, Bill.
Regular portion of our agenda. We have scheduled on this agenda, at, I guess at my request, a closed session to, for the purpose of discussing some personal matters. Based on what I know about this, I think it'll be a fairly abbreviated discussion. But I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make, I'll make that motion. We go in closed session, courts with GS 143-318.11A6 for the purpose of discussing personnel matters.
All right. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Moore. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
I know, y'all gotta wait till we get there.
That would be taken, I don't want that to happen.
We, we will eventually return, hopefully sooner than later, and unless we have other business tonight to take up on this issue.